Good evening, welcome to the November thirteenth, twenty twenty five North Hampton School Committee meeting. I'm Gina Louis Shera, Chair of the School Committee, and I'll be presiding this evening. This meeting is being held remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for the pandemic.
This meeting is being recorded.
This meeting and all participating will be audio and video recorded. And I will begin by asking Cassie to please call the role of the school committee.
Mayor Shara?
Present.
Member Gacy?
Member Weisandfreund?
Yes, present.
Member Seraphie Cox? Member Stein? Member Hennessy? I thought I saw Anne.
Yes, cannot unmute. Here we go.
Okay.
Present.
Oh, good. Uh, member Miller?
Present.
Member LaBounty?
Present.
Member Agna?
Present.
Member Davis?
Present.
Great. Um, okay, we're gonna start with the school committee norms and member Agna, did you prepare something? Here's member Gacy, by the way. You're muted, member Agna. Yeah.
Where'd I go?
Okay, um, I chose the one that, um, in the how we work together section of the norms was agenda are reflective of our goals and are reasonable in scope and time. They include a clear and specific action with accompanying materials. Uh, that's, I'm sure it means the goals are, are including that clear and specific action. I thought of this after having been in a workshop today. The mayor and I and Dr. Bonner are all at the Massachusetts School Committee and Superintendent Annual Meeting in Hyannis. Um, and I went to a workshop that said was, the title was, why do we have to have such long meetings? I think you can probably guess why I might have thought that might be a good thing to do. And, um, where am I? So what I came away with was a lot of interesting ideas from people who it was shared with the community in our meeting, in our workshop. The different practices were shared on how to make meetings manageable. And also the, uh, people from MASC reminded us of our, um, procedures that we need to be adhering to. And so I think I, I got the slides and I will send it because I won't be on school committee. But I do think it, it would be a great idea if possible, and I'm not gonna be there to have a refresher about, um, how meetings should go and how it, um, the time that it takes to have these meetings and what should be presented at meetings. So anyway, that's why I thought that norm would be an important one today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the student representative report and I see the three of you, hold on, there you go. You should be able to unmute. Does that work? Yes. Hi, welcome.
We couldn't figure out how to change the name, so it's, it says Zar.
Hi, Anna Lucia.
Okay, um, yeah, this, it's honestly been really busy this past, past couple weeks or month. You know, just, just in general, it's been really busy. Um, but yeah, lots of stuff is happening, like the play that just finished this past weekend, which was Frankenstein. It was a, like a new, uh, version of it, like not that many places have done it. And it was so cool to see and everyone did so well. And there's like live music for some of it and just really cool effects and all of that. And it was really well done. Um, the soccer teams, both of them are doing really well. The girls have their elite eight round in the state's tournament today. And tomorrow the boys have theirs. And, um, tomorrow also the boys, the football team has a postseason game. Um, it'll be a cold night, but a fun night. And the band is actually having setup night with JFK, so the eighth graders will be coming. The eighth graders will be coming and playing with us a little bit to see what it's like to be in marching band and hopefully to convince them to join when they come to NHS. Um, anything else happen?
Uh, not that I can think of.
Yeah, nothing else, nothing really is happening. There's not lots of tests. Not, not like no standardized tests yet. Um.
We're cruising in the school year.
Yeah, we are. Yeah. In the, oh, yeah, we're at past halfway up the semester.
Quarter one.
Quarter one did close or finish. Which is really, uh, was it relieving?
Yeah.
It was relieving for the seniors because of college, but yeah, that's pretty much it.
Great, thank you.
Anything?
Um, I'll just say homecoming was amazing. So great job, the three of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We always appreciate the support. Everyone should come to our games. Um, and marching band's amazing. You all are amazing. Um, okay, any questions or comments? Still scrollly scroll. Okay, seeing none. Um, thanks very much.
Thanks.
Get it. Uh, next up on our agenda, we have a donation. This is from NEF for twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-three cents uh, for the purchase of books and other reading materials. And I saw Dale West.
I'm here.
There you are. Hi Dale, thanks so much.
Hi, everyone. Um, uh, yeah, so I'm here to present about the, the book fund donation and, um, but first I wanna say, um, to the student representatives, thank you guys for supporting NEF and the supporting the spelling bee. It was great to have you guys there, um, in October, and I hope you guys had a lot of fun. It was great to see you guys there, so. And everybody else who was there as well, but you guys had a really fun team.
Even though we lost, it was a lot of fun.
Um, so I'm here to, um, just present, to present our donation, um, for this year's book fund. Um, we are, uh, for North Hampton specifically, we're donating twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-three cents, which I believe needs to be approved by the school committee. Um, and this is for, uh, for books, for digital subscriptions, for, uh, reading support materials for the classroom. Um, schools use it for a variety, variety of purposes. Um, and, um, it's always very well appreciated um, by librarians and by educators overall. Um, we were able to donate a little bit more this year than last year, so we were happy about that. Um, and the funds come from our, uh, from the city census mailing that we do as well as the plant sale. So, um, we're happy to be able to, to make this donation to the, the North Hampton schools. So I'm happy to answer any questions if folks have those, but.
Thank you so much. So grateful. Um, any questions or comments? Member Agna?
I hope it's obvious that we are so grateful to, um, NEF and it used to be called SOS, the, um, the, the book sale part that, that we're doing anything. But anyway, um, I just really I'm so, so grateful to you for all that you've done and, um, and words can't express it. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. We're happy to help contribute, so.
Thanks.
Any, uh, member Miller?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you and I am coming to the end of being the liaison between the NEF and the school committee. And I've really enjoyed being the liaison and getting to go to some of the meetings. And it's such an impressive organization. And I'm really grateful for all the help that you've provided over many, many years.
Well, thank you for coming to the meetings, Margaret. It's been like great having you there, so.
Okay, if there are no further comments, I will accept a motion. Oh, member Hennessy. Oh, okay.
I move to, uh, accept the donation from NEF with incredible gratitude.
I'll second.
Motion's made by member Hennessy and I think was seconded by member Davis, is that right? Um, okay, any discussion? Roll call, please, Cassie.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weisandfreund?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Member Hennessy needs to be made a co-host.
I thought I already did.
Yes. No, you did not, but yes, I say yes to the motion.
There we go. Um, member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Member Mayor Shara?
Yes. Great, that passes. Again, thanks so much to you Dale and to NEF. We greatly, greatly appreciate it.
Oh, no problem. And thank you all for the work that you do as well. We appreciate you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Bye.
Okay, that moves us to public comment. Um, if you wish to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature. You can always submit a written public comment, which is equally part of the public record. Uh, before you begin your comment, please state your name and your city or town for the record. School committee does not respond during public comment. It's the public's time to speak. So while your comment should be directed to the school committee, you'll understand that we do not respond to them in this meeting. Uh, there's a limit of three minutes per person, um, unless language interpretation or accommodations for communication disability have been requested at the start, in which case the time limit, excuse me, is six minutes. I will be setting a timer to ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak. According to the rules of procedure, the school committee receives public comment for a maximum of ninety minutes. And we will be beginning at six forty-three. Um, and, uh, Lindsay?
Hi, my name is Lindsay Rowe. I'm a parent at the Ryan Road Elementary School. I live in Florence, Massachusetts. Um, I can't remember what the other thing I was supposed to say was. Um.
All right, great. So I'm a parent at the Ryan Road Elementary School. I served on the out of school and after school time committee
last year that the superintendent put together. Um, and I'm here today to talk to you about the state of aftercare um, and enrichment in our schools. Um, at Ryan Road, we have had zero days of after school enrichment for our children. There has been none offered to date, um, while other schools have had after school enrichment programs for their children. Um, the LEEDs model has shown to be effective. It provides after school care and enrichment care for those students. Um, but we do not have equal programs across the district. And I really would like to encourage everyone to, um, consider moving towards a district-wide model for after school enrichment and aftercare programs. Um, students should not have to be sent home at second graders on the bus to empty homes. And, cause there are only forty-eight slots at the YMCA program and there are thirty-five kindergartners. So if you just do the math, um, there are not enough slots for kids at Ryan Road. Um, and we did the survey. I highly recommend, if you've not seen the PowerPoint that the superintendent provided, um, that we provided, happy to share that with you or happy to encourage to talk to people individually about that. Um, but the LEEDs program, the students, the parents are routinely more excited and satisfied with their offerings than the parents at Ryan Road and some of the other schools. So that's all I'd like to say is that there have been zero days of after school enrichment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Rebecca Edwards.
Hi, everybody. Um, I am following up on what Lindsay said. Um, thanks to Lindsay who did a lot of hard work with the out of school time committee. And thanks to everybody else who was on the committee putting that time in. Um, it seems like really clear and evident that the LEEDs model is hugely successful at LEEDs based on the, um, just like the glowing feelings of the caregivers there. And I am so hopeful. I think maybe there will be a vote tonight. Um, and I am, I'm just like very, very hopeful that the advocacy around this topic, and I know that the, I know that the committee has also like historically looked at this issue and, um, and I know that there's been a committee engaged right now. Thank you to that committee. And I'm just very, very hopeful that the vote brings everything to fruition and that we have, um, a successful new framework for aftercare next year that I think would make a huge difference for so many families. My family included our children. And I also think that having aftercare, um, under the under the supervision of the school just leads to so many opportunities for like all of the amazing things we could do at that time. So, um, fingers crossed at this meeting. Thank you all for being here, and, um, I'll be watching.
Thank you. Okay, next is Zara Usman.
Sorry, guys. Um, I just, in regards to the aftercare, I was thinking about it, and I went to LEEDs, and I participated in LEAP the whole time I was there, and, um, my favorite class that I took through LEAP was class on 3D printing, and that was when I was in fifth grade. And it was actually taught by a high schooler who went to NHS. And so I was thinking that if we could, like, it would have to be supervised by an adult, and I know that, but we could get like volunteer hours for like National Honor Society members, or like, just like anyone would love. I'm sure there's plenty of kids who would love to teach like a class of like something basic related to, um, something they're really interested in, because like, I mean, it would look really good for college, too. And then if we could get like a teacher to stay after school to like supervise it, and then they could just be like doing work while the kid is like teaching the kids and just making sure like everything's okay. Like, I really think that if, like, this is something really feasible, and I really think that it would be great to get it all the elementary schools like as much as possible. And I think that you can get students from NHS to help you with it. And anyways, I just wanted to say that. So, yeah, and LEEDs is a great model. Can verify that.
Thanks, Zara. Okay. Any further comments? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to announcements. Uh, any school committee members that have announcements? Member Hennessy? I see you, member Gacy.
It's just a quick one. I, I just, um, I know lots going on at the high school, and I appreciate the student report. One thing, uh, that also just ended was the unified basketball season, and I just, um, those school committee members who will no longer be on the school committee next year, we will have extra time. And I, it was just, uh, it's a beautiful thing to watch. It's lovely. It's competitive, and, um, they had a great season. Um, and they actually played my, the, the school where I work, so it was extra exciting for me, but the Coach McGrath and the students do a great job, so I just wanted to say that.
Great. Thank you. Member Gacy?
Um, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am going to turn off my camera because I'm unstable. Well, my camera's unstable, or my internet's unstable. Uh, in any case, um, the CPAC, uh, has been. Can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah, I just stopped your video, so that might help.
Okay. Okay. Um, so the CPAC has sent us, um, an update on what they've been working on this past month. Number one, data on missed services. In their October report, we highlighted our appreciation of Superintendent Bonner's statement that the district will likely provide aggregate de-identified reports to the school committee periodically, e.g., quarterly or semi-annually, to report on trends and systemic issues on missed services without revealing individual student information. During October's school committee meeting, Superintendent Bonner furthermore made clear that the system would track all IEP services, such as those provided by SLPs, OTs, et cetera, rather than only tracking services provided by paraprofessionals and special education teachers. This is great. We hope that a quarterly report will be forthcoming to both the school committee and the public in December twenty twenty-five, following the September twenty twenty-five system start. A shared understanding of IEP service delivery, missed services among school staff, administrators, caregivers, and the broader public is crucial for building that trust. Clear data on the number of students who missed one service versus two, versus three, et cetera, due to staff apacstences during the initial tracking period would go a long way to helping us all understand the broader service delivery picture. Two, arranging PSAT and SAT accommodations. A parent and student were unable to arrange for accommodation on a standardized test, which raised the question, where do parents and students find guidance and instructions on this process? Director Holloway shared instructions with the intention of including this on a website. We are waiting for confirmation that this has indeed been posted. Three, town election and CPAC questionnaire. We deeply appreciate all of the candidates who completed the CPAC community questionnaire. We look forward to working with newly affected, elected and returning town leaders. We extend our sincere gratitude to all those who have listened to and acted upon the voices and concerns of CPAC caregivers and families. Four, the pilot initiative for a family partnership. This has been delayed due to trouble identifying a third-party facilitator, but meetings to choose a facilitator are scheduled within the week. Number five, NHS long block schedule. The CPAC community requests more of a voice in how the high school schedule is restructured. We expect to discuss this with Principal, uh, Ben and Director Matt at our November tenth CPAC meeting. Six, out of district. The out-of-district subcommittee continues to meet on a regular basis. Out-of-district students and their families face enormous challenges, huge expenses, and barriers to participation and inclusion in community life. Out-of-district students need the support and specialized programming they receive in schools designed to meet their needs. These schools are often the most inclusive spaces for OOD children. To ignore them or to reduce them to cost is to not deny their humanity and our collective duty to support every child. Seven, literacy. Members of the CPAC Literacy Committee met to discuss experiences with reading instruction in the district. We're a small group of parents whose children have struggled with dyslexia and other reading challenges for years, as well as highly-trained professionals, reading instructors. This gives us a unique and informed perspective on this critical issue. Identification and screening. The foundation of any successful literacy program is a robust identification and screening process. While we appreciate the district's current screening protocols, we urge the district to continue the following improvements. Universal dyslexia screening, more consistent and complete sharing of assessments results with caregivers, including subcomponent scores. More professional development around screening itself. Teachers need to understand the science of reading pertaining assessments as this drives appropriate interventions. Standardization of testing across schools and grades, allowing for longitudinal analysis, and the development of a long-term plan grounded in the science of reading. Professional development instruction. We commend the district for allocating funds for Orton-Gillingham training. However, we'd like to emphasize the importance of Orton-Gillingham certification, not just training. Many of our students require direct instruction from highly-trained experts in reading intervention. Dyslexia and other severe reading challenges cannot be addressed by staff with only minimal additional training. We encourage the district to bolster our in-house expertise and give the urgency of our need. Recommend the district bring on external contractors to supplement our current instructional capacities and resource gaps, equity, and parent involvement. Parents repeatedly report that their children are not receiving the reading support they need. We also hear that parents are often rebuffed and dismissed when advocating for more support. Furthermore, there are families with unsupervised, underserved children of caregivers who are unable to spend the time and effort required to advocate for their children. You shouldn't have to be a litigator to ensure your child gets a proper education in Northampton. We urge the school committee to proactively address our current literacy deficits, ensure the public understands the scope of the problem, and make sure curriculum and training recommendations grounded in this science of reading. And that's with sincere regards from Jacob Drew and David Gorham, the Northampton CPAC officers. And I'd like to include a response from Director Holloway, who said, "Thank you very much for these notes. I did want to share with you and the committee that we have funded four of our teachers to engage in the full Orton-Gillingham certification process throughout the school year. This is a major commitment of, on the time of the teachers in the midst of a busy year, and this effort should be celebrated when your letter below is read in the public meeting." Similarly, I want to be sure we celebrate the efforts of the high school special education department to build out the clear protocols for PSAT accommodations. Those will be posted to the district's website once they are reviewed by the full department. It should not be long, and we'll we'll be sure to let you know, both know, as soon as they are posted to the website. So that is the CPAC report for this month. And I can send you a copy of that, uh, Cassie, if you'd like to include it in the, um, record.
Thank you. I have that, Holly.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I think we all got that. Um, and I just want to, I want to thank CPAC because that's a lot of, um, a lot of labor that they're putting into, but I think it's, I mean, I certainly very much appreciate, um, being, you know, as informed as possible as, as to what's being discussed in those meetings. So, um, I, I sincerely thank them for all of that extra work that they're putting in. Um, I think it's already shown to be, uh, really productive, so thank you. And thank you, Holly, for for delivering it. Um, any other announcements from school committee members? Okay, um, then we're moving to recommended actions. I will read them and ask for any removals because there's no discussion. Um, starting with the minutes, we've got the October ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes, October ninth, uh, twenty twenty-five, um, Student Advisory Council minutes, uh, November fifth, twenty eighteen, meeting minutes, and March eighth, twenty eighteen, meeting minutes. Um, and does that close us out, Cassie?
That closes us out. We are done. We met the superintendent's calendar. We are D-O-N-E, done.
Um, Cassie, unbelievable thanks to you.
Thanks.
You did.
Other folks, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, any removals? Member Weizenfreud?
Yes, I'd like to remove the October ninth minutes, please.
Uh, just the regular meeting minutes.
Yep.
Okay, any others? Seeing none, roll call on, uh, B, C, and D, recommended actions.
Member Weizenfreud?
Stay.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Um, yes, although was there a motion in a second, and I just missed it?
Oh, you're right.
No, there wasn't. Good catch. Is there a motion on, uh, recommended actions one of B, C, and D?
I will, uh, so moved.
I'll second it.
Seconded, uh, member, made by member Seraphy Cox, seconded by member Agna.
Uh, member Stein?
No.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
One abstain, one no, eight I.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go back to the October ninth minutes. And member Weizenfreud?
Yeah, um, so I have a couple of things under, on page two, Cassie, under student representative report. Um, there are a couple of things I'd like to add. Uh, it says Anna Lucia Ohm spoke about the implementation of the new flex policies put into place to meet state time and learning requirements. I'd like to add, and the hardships this is putting on students, because she really spoke pretty extensively about that. Um, and, uh, also the next sentence, she reported that at the high school, only one bathroom for each gender has been open, and I would like to add that she said for pretty much the whole school year. Um, and, um, lastly, uh, in regard to these bathroom concerns, I did ask, um, Dr. Bonner, how this kind of thing is typically followed up on, and Dr. Bonner stated that this is not a new concern. She would follow up with Principal Tadleyari and follow up with this committee, with this body today on eleven thirteen. So, um, it, I think it'd be good to reflect that in the minutes, and I also hope that, uh, Dr. Bonner and her report will follow up with us, uh, today on that. Um, and the only other thing that I have is on page three, um, under, uh, Mr. Yashnani's testimony, it says spoke of the irresponsibility of school leadership. I think it's important to add that he said particularly in regard to special education, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Is that a motion to amend?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Second.
Uh, the second was member Seraphy Cox, yes?
Wait. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
All right, so it's a motion to amend.
Um. Seconded by member Seraphy Cox.
Okay. Are we taking it to a vote?
Uh, uh, we should vote. Um. Member Stein, do you have additional amendments?
Yeah, so I, I guess we could vote on this, and then I could offer them, and we could vote again.
Okay.
Or I, I think that's probably the fastest way.
Okay. Um, any discussion on those amendments? Roll call, please.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Stain.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weizenfreud?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Member Stein?
Um, yes, so I would also like to make a motion to amend the now amended minutes, um, to include on page six, the top of page six. This is in, um, the section regarding the NEF endemic grants that begins on page five. Um, but I'd like to amend it to add a sentence, um, or two to capture, um, my question to, uh, Marty Wool about the ability to fundraise, uh, for operations um, and his sort of response that it would be very difficult.
I'll second that amendment.
Uh, so motions made by member Stein, seconded by member Seraphy Cox. Any discussion on that amendment? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Sorry, just a second here.
Or take your time.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weizenfreud?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, is there a motion on these minutes as double amended?
Um, motion to pass the minutes for October twenty twenty-five.
As amended.
As.
Correct, as amended. Thank you.
A second.
Okay, motions made by member Seraphy Cox, seconded by member Agna. Any discussion? Roll call, please, when you're ready.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weizenfreud?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, moving on to recommended actions two, uh, A is a donation from Gombo to the North Hampton High School Band of two thousand dollars. B is a donation of Gombo, from Gombo to the North Hampton High School Trip to Italy of fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, that's the Latin field trip. Uh, second reading on the middle school pathway exploration policy. Um, and second reading on the competency determination, uh, for graduation, um, requirements. And E is the, a budget transfer of a hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars, um, from SE Paraeducator to SE Teacher. Member Stein?
Um, I was wondering if we could remove the, uh, second reading of the competency determination? Um, I want to ask a question about it.
Okay, remove D. Member Seraphy Cox?
That was gonna be my same removal.
Okay, so we're moving D. Um, if there are no further removals, then is there a motion on A, B, C, and E?
I'll make a motion on approving A, B, C, and, and A, B, C, D, and E.
Not D, we're taking out D, so A, B, C, and E.
C and E.
Right. Motion's made by member Agna, seconded by?
I'll second.
Uh, you, uh, I don't have no idea who that was. Member Miller, okay, seconded by member Miller. Um, roll call, please.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weizenfreud?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
The, member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us back to D, and member Stein, you had a question, and member Seraphy Cox, you had a, had a question. Member Stein? And member Agna, maybe?
Yeah, I just wanted to raise the question we, I don't know if folks have seen it, we got it, um, earlier this afternoon. And, uh, it's from one of our incoming members, and the question is as follows, um. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out where to be, begin here. Um, the question was whether or not we could spell out specifically in the final document, um, for those students in the substantially separate classroom, that taking developmental math and developmental ELA would not fulfill the new proposed, uh, competency determination requirements. Um, so that was the request, um, and I guess the request was informed from, um, comments made from Principal Tagliari's, um, presentation during the subcommittee meeting on curriculum on the third. So I'm putting that forward to discuss if we should amend the document or pass the document with that, uh, suggested amendment. I don't know a lot about, um, the, uh, this particular provision in the documents. So if Superintendent Bonner or Principal Tagliari could maybe speak to it, that would be great.
Um, okay, let's maybe get all the questions and then we'll see. Um, member Seraphy Cox, do you have, do you have a different?
Uh, yeah, mine, mine is different.
Um.
Mine isn't.
You're, sorry, what?
I was just gonna say I'll follow up on member Stein's if you want, because it's in the same.
Yeah, then have, have member Agna go first then.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, um, uh, member Seraphy Cox. So, yeah, I was gonna, I raised my hand because of that, um, question that we got from the future member, um, who's been very active in CPAC, and she did pick up on something that was said at our curriculum subcommittee meeting. And I must say, I was glad that she brought it up because I did sort of think, hmm, so that would not fill the requirement. So I, I think that if Dr. Bonner can help us understand that, I would love for us to have that, especially and thank to member, new member Mahoney for bringing it up. Is that, is that something, Dr. Bonner, that you can do, or, or Ben? I mean.
I don't know that I see Principal Tagliari, but maybe I'm just missing him, um.
He, he's not with us this evening, so I can respond. I did, I, I'll wait till all the questions are there.
Okay, member Seraphy Cox, do you want to go to your question?
Yeah, um, uh, my question is about the appeals process, um. I, is there a form, uh, or maybe there will be a form created, uh, about, hmm, you know, how to appeal, uh, the determination of, uh, of demonstration of mastery, or just the determination of, um, for graduation. Um, and I mean, my, I guess, I guess that's maybe the, the, the main question, and then I have follow-up questions based on the answer.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Bonner, whenever you're ready.
Okay, so, uh, yes, we can add a statement, uh, to the policy, uh, concerning the developmental level classes that will not, um, meet the standards that are set forth in our policy. But the po, policy was literally, um, written based upon what courses actually do meet the standards. And so it does not really list any courses that do not meet, but it's important for our families to know that those students who are in those specialized programs at the high school, that, um, developmental ELA or developmental math, they do not, uh, meet those standards. Uh, so there would have to be alternative methods in order to meet, uh, the competencies. And then as to the question that member Seraphy Cox requested, so there is no formalized form that we created, we specifically said in writing that a parent can do that, but we can create a template, uh, for our families, but that doesn't, that, that's more regulatory, so it does not have to be with our policy that's due to DESI, uh, within the next, um, thirty days.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, what we s- send to DESI, uh, that, that makes sense. Um, but I, yeah, I think, um, just saying very generally, oh, sorry, was my internet in and out? Um, I think, uh, just saying very generally, request in writing, um, uh, a form is always helpful, or, um, at least a, um, like a template or something, you know, to help, um, help folks know what it is that they're supposed to say. Um, and it, do we have, uh, like a designated person within the, within the high school or within the district who, um, would help families to navigate that process, the appeal process?
That would be their guidance counselors.
Okay, yeah, I think that maybe on the form, you know, could be something, um, to list on the form. Um, and I'm, I'm curious, uh, as a follow-up to, um, your answer to member Agna and member Stein, um, are there other classes? Uh, I assume the answer is yes, that there are other classes that wouldn't need the competency requirements. Um, but I'm curious if there are other classes that might need to be listed in that same way.
So remember that I, I pointed out that this policy shows what courses will be in compliance.
Right.
And so, and the, and these are the courses that DESI is looking for to be listed in our policy. We had specific guidelines to follow, so there wasn't much room for, for elaboration. But you have your course of studies, and you'll see that there's tons of different electives that students can take that will not meet these specific standards. So what's in this policy are those courses that do align with specific standards that are outlined through, uh, the competencies that have gone throughout the years with MCAS. So it's very, very specific.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I wonder if that, um, i- i- if there could be more clarity around that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not wanting to, um, to derail the, the policy this evening by any means, um, uh, especially since we have that deadline with DESI, but just, um, you know, for, in the interest of clarity for, for families.
We will share this information with families, and it'll be very clear in the, the course, um, the course of studies in terms of that competency, so that they know that it's, it can't just be random classes that they're taking. But these are specific classes, and these are the classes that are core classes that we know that students will be taking. Uh, majority of our students will be taking, so.
Uh, member Gacy?
Um, I just want to comment that policies are hopefully not rewritten every year. And so if we were to list all of the classes, the electives that do not schedule in that policy, it would have to be updated every year. And that, um, you know, I think perhaps it might be better served by putting, um, a reference in the course catalog, or maybe an asterisk next to required courses that, uh, show them what they need to do, or put them in bold. Some, somehow designate so that students get a clear idea of in another place, not the policy place, because I doubt that they'll be referring to policies, um, there. Thank you.
Okay, take notes. Okay, member Miller?
Um, I just wondered, I, I think it's an entirely different process for students that are enrolled in special education classes that are very different. And they must have a whole different set of ways in which to demonstrate that they have met the requirements. And I'm, I'm not suggesting that needs to be in the policy, but I'm just wanted to comment that it really needs to be done separately.
So on page two of the policy, under additional considerations, please refer to students with disabilities, which it really does spell out that there's alternative means in order to, to meet those standards.
As long as families understand exactly what those are. That's, that's what I would, I wondered if it needs to be delineated for parents that have entirely differences, you know, set of expectations for their students.
Mm-hmm. So specifically, it, it reads, "The district is committed to providing a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. An individualized IEP education program team determines the best pathway for a student with disabilities, which can include general education with supports, specialized courses taught by a dual licensed special education and content area educator, or an alternative demonstration of mastery, like a portfolio or project-based assessment." So that is definitely in there. We did address that. We also addressed our out-of-district placements as well as our, um, English learners.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think it's good, but I just think beyond a portfolio, I'm sure with each student, it must be fairly individualized.
Correct.
That would be in their IEP plan.
Member Hennessy?
Uh, I just, I like this. I think it's very clear. Dr. Bonner, your answers, um, were helpful. And I, I just want to remind people that this was also, uh, we needed to do this because it was born out of a time when MCAS no longer is required. And so some special education students were denied services till they're twenty-two, because they said, well, now they met them. And so this competency determination offers clarity for parents, um, or caregivers. Um, so they, some students who need services till twenty-two will get those services. So right now, it's been a really hard year around the, around the state, where some districts saying, your, your student met, met the determination, because MCAS didn't count anymore, they just had to take it. Um, so I, I like, I like what we wrote, and I'm happy to have what, um, Cindy Mahoney wrote. I think that's fine, but I think it's a great policy, and I just appreciate the work, um, you did on it, and, um, Principal Tagliari did.
Thank you.
Member Stein?
Yeah, and I similarly appreciate the work. I know it was the result of everyone in the state also having to figure this out, given the, the vote on MCAS, right? So, um, kind of a dynamic, fluid situation in which we had to make sort of choices. My question's sort of a bigger one, and I don't know that we've even had time to map it yet, but it will sort of impact some of the other things we're looking at as a body, such as the, um, instructional time, right, uh, at the high school, uh, with the sort of DESI, um, PRS complaint, and the sort of other changes in the state regarding this, and also our curriculum of study. And the, the broad question, right, and I don't know that we have an answer tonight, but I want to raise a question, is given what we've determined here is what's required for, uh, competency determination, um, do, are we offering classes, and are they available to the students that we have in significant numbers and availability to actually be achievable by the time they graduate, right? So like, this is the big question of class size, class availability, and where the overlap is between these courses which do count and the rest of our offerings. So it's something I, I want to continue to raise as we talk about these, these sort of other pieces. Um, because I don't know if we need to make adjustments or not. Thanks.
Okay, member Agna?
Dr. Bonner might want to weigh in more, but I do remember in our curriculum meeting that, um, Principal Wa, um, Tagliari did say very clearly that this will be rolled out, and we will have this in place for this year for students. So I think that if he was concerned that it might not be something that we could fulfill, I would hope he would have said it at that time. Um, but, you know, again, member Stein, I think it's, I, I'm glad that you asked that question, and I also think that, uh, Principal Tagliari was pretty confident in it. And I just would also like to echo what member Hennessy said, that this is very fine stuff that has been worked on, and also was worked on with the educators in the building. So it, it wasn't a top-down, uh, effort, it was really bringing in all of the stakeholders. So anyway, that's, that's my response right now. Thank you.
Thanks. Member Hennessy?
Yeah, just to say, he, he was explicitly asked, because we have to have this for this year's graduating class, whether or not this was going to be disruptive, and he was very clear that this was, you know, people were going to be moving forward. Um, there, there weren't any concerns about students graduating this year with this. I don't remember exactly his words, but that was the gist. I felt really relieved, having someone, a senior, also.
Um, okay, uh, member Gacy?
Um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to pass the graduation competency determination, um.
Motion's made.
That's it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion's made by member Gacy, seconded by member Davis, I believe. All right, uh, any further discussion? Um, member Weizenfreud?
Yeah, so, um, member Gacy, is that with the change that, um, incoming member, um, Cindy, what's her last name? Mahoney, thank you. Recommended or without that change?
With.
With the change?
With that change as noted.
Thank you.
So, okay, motion to, uh, approve as amended, a motion to, um, amend. So we've got to amend it first, so no one made that motion, right?
I'll make a motion to amend the, um, the final draft of the competency determination for graduation policy to include, uh, the sentence, um, or a sentence clarifying that, uh, for students in substantially separate classroom, uh, taking developmental math and developmental ELA will not fulfill the new, the new, uh, competency determination requirements.
And.
A second it.
Okay, motion's made by member Weizenfreud, seconded by member Agna to, with, uh, to amend. Any discussion on that amendment? Okay, roll call, please.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Weizenfreud?
Yes. Number Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Number Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Okay, is there now a motion to approve it as amended?
I'll make that motion to approve the amended graduation competency determinations.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made by Member Gazy, seconded by Member LaBounty. Any discussion on the motion as amended? Roll call, please, Cassie.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara? Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Member Gazy?
Yes.
Member Weizenfreund?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that passes. Thanks for all the work. And that brings us to new business and first item is um, up for a vote. And this is, uh, we have a presentation and discussion with the Climate Action Project Administration Director, Ben Wile, who's with us, to discuss three projects. One is expanding the PV on the Ryan Road roof, Ryan Road School, Ryan Road School roof. Um, creating a solar parking canopy at Jackson Street School and replacing the chiller system at the high school, which is nearing, uh, nearing or at the end of its life, and moving the boiler system to a backup for a geothermal system at the high school. So he will, we welcome him. He'll talk about these projects and why they're beneficial and the tax credits and financing um, for them and the energy and cost savings uh, over time for them. So welcome, Director Bob Wile. Good to see you.
Thanks for having me. Uh, may, may I share my screen so I can do a presentation?
You're.
Do you want me to do it? Do you want me to do it for you?
Uh, I, I will. And I, I've been.
You want to do it yourself. I get it.
If it, if it works.
Okay, cool.
Looks good.
Great. The, so yeah, thank you uh, all for having me. Um, so um, before I uh, get, get started, I wanted to kind of give you my feeling about, about the school system. So my daughter graduated uh, from the Northampton High School. And just today she sent me this text, was a screenshot of her educating her roommates. And um, and then she goes hashtag ethos pathos logos, which was this the principles of rhetoric thing she got from Mr. Isler. And the fact that that is stuck with her and she's applying it in life, uh, that's, that's what school's about. So it's kind of cool. Um, and that ends the pathos portion of our presentation. Um, so uh, I'm gonna talk about the, I'm basically taking the projects from easy and small to hard and big. So at Ryan Road, we already have some solar and there's an opportunity to add more. Um, and this is a very, very timely time to do it. So the proposal is to uh, purchase the outright, the, the solar for, for that roof. And the reason this roof is that the roof is uh, relatively new and so it should last the life of the solar. Um, it would be a hundred and eighty kilowatts of capacity. The source would be the Climate Stabilization Fund. Um, and it would exceed current school usage. So all the excess is then net metered to other uh, NPS accounts. So this is a way of um, producing a, an annual income of about uh, sixty-three thousand dollars and change. Um, and I, you know, we could think of that as kind of an annual transfer from an uh, uh, from uh, the essentially the off-flow of investment from the Climate Stabilization Fund to the NPS operational budget. Um, and it's a, it's a pretty good deal with a simple payback of, of just over five years and an internal rate of return uh, a good deal better than the, the stock market. So that's, that's our first uh, solar project and it takes advantage again of, of the opportunity that's there at the Ryan Road uh, roof. The Jackson Street School is a more challenging opportunity, um, but I think worth doing. So you can see mocked up here uh, about where this solar parking canopy would be on that main parking lot. Um, that just, uh, I guess that's north of, of the, the bus circle. So the key thing here is to be able to finance this, this would be using a power purchase agreement. So we essentially let another company own the project and then we pay for it. Uh, we pay, we essentially pay for electricity uh, that it produces over the term, which is twenty-five years. So the rate proposed is lower than the current cost that we pay for electricity. So any electricity produced is offsetting electricity we would otherwise have to pay for. It, it gives us uh, annually about thirteen thousand dollars savings and over the twenty-five years, it's about a million dollars. Um, so a more challenging project. Um, the way we've designed it um, avoids having to cut down uh, the big trees. Um, while still providing shading of, over a good portion of the parking lot, there might have to be a little bit of pruning of a smaller black locust that's uh, over by that, that green circle that represents a, a potentially uh, shading tree. Um, and just to give you a sense of, of what that might look like, um, this is a similar solar parking canopy of roughly the same size. Uh, that's, that's in a different location. So you can kind of imagine what that would look like. So that is, um, that, those are the two kind of simple things that I, I, um, I don't know if it's, if we want to pause and discuss those or go on to uh, the big high school project, which is more involved.
I would say, let's, let's do the PV ones first and then move on to high school. Um, and it looks like Member Seraphie Cox maybe has a question or comment.
Okay, glad to answer.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I thank you for this presentation. Um, I am curious if you could talk a bit about the current solar um, panels that are on um, several of our schools and whether those are creating net yearly income for the schools? Uh, and if not, then why not? Um, that, um, yeah.
They are. Ab- absolutely. Uh, so if you look on this, this picture here, the, the PV panels that are actually photographed and not blue representations are the ones that actually exist. So you can see the size of the current array compared to the future array or the proposed array. Um, so the current array is producing electricity. And um, it was also procured through a power purchase agreement, but it was one that was a very generous donation style power purchase agreement. Uh, so that after six years, uh, the um, Fip and Adams, uh, a very generous couple basically sold it to the school for a dollar. So, but that also met, met the limit of their capacity for, for generosity. The, this one is one where we're, we're proposing to use the school, uh, the Climate Stabilization Fund to just purchase the project. And therefore we, the school gets entirely all, all of the benefit. There's no PPA or anything. So that's on um, Bridge Street. We have a similar, all three of these schools, we have similar sizes, Bridge Street, Ryan Road and uh, Leeds. And they're all producing electricity. So absolutely working fine. Relative to the uh, total electricity demand at these schools, it's still pretty small.
So in terms of um, how we would see that on the budget? Like, it's not like there's a line item necessarily, and maybe this is more of a Bobby question. Like, h- how could um, how could a, a, a person, you know, just random resident look at the budget and see, uh, you know, how much the schools are um, are saving from the current uh, solar panel?
Well, I can answer how it would appear on the school's energy bills. And that does translate to how budgeting would be done, right? So it's going to appear as a credit on the energy bills. And, and because this is more than their annual usage, over the course of a year, there will be more credits on the, on Ryan Road's electricity bill than it can use. And so that excess, right? So essentially it would wipe out its electricity bill. That's gone. So you could look at what is currently budgeted for Ryan Road and you could delete that, right? But then there's a little bit extra and you'd look at the production and that is, you, there's a, it's called virtual net metering and it's basically sent to one of the other schools to put a credit onto those bills.
Okay, so um, in terms of what it looks like right now, it just looks like a slightly lower uh, energy bill than we would have had otherwise.
Precisely.
Future, potentially, it could be a, a zeroed-out bill. Okay, that was very helpful. Thank you.
Member Stein.
Yeah, I sort of had very similar questions. Um, and I'm trying to figure out like how much money they've been offsetting. So like when we look at our line item budget for these items each year, we'll see like a net metering charge. But it, it doesn't have the actual details from the bill. So we won't see like how much was offset from solar production that we already have. And it's been something we've asked about for a few years um, and haven't figured it out. Um, the, the sort of other bigger question is sort of twofold. On the one hand, once we start, say this goes forward and we start generating excess, the way we budget, I think would have to change because then we're essentially using the proceeds to subsidize maybe one school instead of another. And if we're doing building-based budgets, it's a whole thing we've got to figure out. But beyond that, like the capacity that the city has in other solar farms, are we getting any other net metering discounts that are being applied to the schools from those? And could you just like share a little bit about like the bigger solar strategy?
Yes, so we currently are subscribers to essentially the community solar projects, both one at Spencer Road, uh, Spencer Meadow rather, which is quite large, and another ones uh, on the landfill, the former landfill for the city run by Amoresco. So a s- a similar kind of uh, PPA structure. And we, we get credits in dollars on our energy bills throughout the city. This is not just uh, the schools. This is uh, municipal electricity bills throughout. We, we get credits from production at those two solar farms in the form of dollars at the full value of, of essentially the residential um, uh, rate for um, uh, for, for what electricity would be, right? So it's like reverse, r- running your ne- meter backwards, but it's putting credit on your bills. Then we pay the owners of those solar farms essentially for that credit. So at Spencer Meadow, we're paying seventy cents on the dollar, right? So we're getting credits, but we are having, you know, we're paying something for that. Um, at, uh, with Amoresco because it's older, because it's on our landfill and all these things, we locked that in. And I, I'm gonna say it's eleven, maybe it's twelve cents. I can't remember, but that's a limited amount, right? There's only so much to go around. Um, so we try to optimize to make sure that we've kind of distributed it well. You know, so that, that, so, so it, it goes to all the different operations and that we don't start adding too many credits on some bills. Um, and they start accumulating credits that they can't use. And that's something that was happening and then we reapportion them and put them, honestly, because the schools are the big users, you end up putting a lot into the schools because you know you can't outrun those credits. Um, and that's the current case. Even with all the capacity, we could take way more.
So, um, thank you. That's super helpful. So like in that case, with the one where it's like seventy, thirty, right? We'd essentially pay them like seventy percent of the generation rate that we're getting the credit for, right? And we'd have thirty percent that we could apply as credits or do we get like the full credit?
Full credit. We get the full credit on our account and we basically pay them for, it, it, so we're, we're essentially paying seventy cents to get a dollar. So we're, we're up, we're ahead, uh, thirty cents. Yeah, uh, it's the same, yeah, it's the same thing. It's, it's cheaper and we're getting it. It buys down our bills a little bit.
A- and do you know, so like when we pay like the, the school bills, so do we, it's like a real nuts and bolts. So sorry, but like if we.
Yeah, yeah, it's all right.
We paid the school bills and you say it's Ryan Road and it's been net metered to give the credit for the existing smaller array there and then whatever portion of these other solar credits. So like when we get the bill, do we pay the provider, like the generator through that or?
No, so this is different. So the one at Ryan Road, prior to now, w- we were paying uh, a, a small amount and I don't remember what that was because it was a few years ago that they handed over the PPA, that you know, that their, their term ended. But during that term, the school would have been paying them, uh, uh, Fip and Adams, whatever the rate was for the electricity uh, produced. And it would behind the meter be offsetting electricity usage. And you wouldn't see that on your electricity bill because it's as though it never happened, right? Now, it's simply reducing the electricity bill. We have um, uh, some tracking on these uh, uh, all the solar arrays. So we can estimate how much they're producing. And you know, it, it's, and then we can report on that to, you know, to the state and all that, that so forth. So it is possible for us to go and find out, well, how much was generated. Um, but on the electricity bills, you won't see it because it's behind the meter.
So I guess like how do we, and maybe I'm missing it, but like how do we, maybe it's that the credit we get is only thirty percent at the end rather than.
For Spencer Meadow.
Yeah, for Spencer Meadow, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so, so that's not any of this. That's all basically just buying production to get some free money or not free money, get, get, yeah, get some money onto your bills that offsets your, your costs. It's just money. But from like what we're trying to do, by being a major uh, off-taker of credits from Spencer Meadow, we helped create the uh, um, the ability for the investor to build that utility scale uh, solar plant. Right?
So thank you. That, that's helpful.
But again, has nothing to do with this. This is, we own it. It's behind the meter. It's simply, it, you know, when it's winter, you're going to see an electricity bill, right? Because we're not generating enough electricity. And then in the summer, we're going to start generating negative credit or negative bills, right? So there's credits on our bill and over a year, it's going to more than cover the total bill so that annually the electricity cost should be zero, right? And then the extra credit you would want to send to one of the other NPS accounts.
Okay, member Davis. You're muted.
My connection's a little unstable, so that's why I keep turning off my camera. Um, can you explain if it's okay to shift from the Ryan Road to the, the Jackson Street project? Can you, I know you said it and I read this. You sent this, but when I, this afternoon, but explain again what you said about the project that a company owns it? I didn't.
Right.
What that.
So, so this is called a power purchase agreement. So in other words, we don't have in our city budget or in our resources, the ability to buy this outright like we can with Ryan Road because it's more expensive. And in fact, solar canopies are generally more expensive, right? You got to build the whole structure and all that stuff. Prior to the current uh, incentive system in Massachusetts, which is this smart three point O, I wouldn't have tried this. It's, it wouldn't, it just wouldn't have penciled out. But with that smart incentive of almost nineteen cents, you can now amortize the entire cost over twenty-five years and pay for that production again over twenty-five years. Well, somebody has to put the money upfront and the people who would do it is the solar developer who are good at this, who know how to finance everything. So they finance it. And then we have an agreement with them for twenty-five years to pay for the electricity that's produced. And it locks in this PPA rate. So we're locking in fifteen cents, right? So that's already less expensive than our current electricity cost. And it's already less expensive than what we pay for a credit, uh, for, essentially for a kilowatt hour produced at Spencer Meadow, right? So it's already cheaper than that. But more importantly, it's locked in for twenty-five years. And I guarantee you, it's not going to be eighteen cents. for, you know, for long, you know, like that's just as inflation is gonna happen. So it's a good way of locking in, in this case, more than a hundred percent of the current electricity usage of Jackson Street. So again, we buy that and then we net meter the credit over to another NPS property.
Thank you.
Member Hennessy.
Real practical question. I really love this. It makes a lot of sense to me. Uh, the Jackson Street one, so I I'm noticing it where it's located above the parking lot near basketball court at an elementary school. So if let's say balls go up on top of that, the company will fix what is broke. Yes?
Um, I it's up pretty high.
Yeah, no.
Um, and second of all, the these are pretty well hardened. The 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 glass on on PV arrays is is pretty well hardened. But they might also have to add some sort of protective device. So this is again, at this point, this is pro forma. They haven't done full design. You know, they're not going to go forward with anything until we sign a contract with them.
Right, but but if something were to happen.
Yes.
They are responsible.
For twenty five years.
Right.
They own it. They have to fix it. It's their problem.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any more questions? I mean, if they come up later, that's fine, but for Jax for this solar canopy and uh that other PV. Okay, I don't think I see anybody. So moving on to the
Right, I just wanted to finish. This is just an important detail I forgot to to mention. So the reason we're bringing this to you now is that we are under some level of urgency. We need to get these contracts signed before the end of the year in order to safe harbor them. So that we can, the the finances work out when we get the investment tax credit, which is expiring because it's a federal project and this is renewable energy. Um, so the first part is to lock in our ability to use lower cost materials, most many of which come from China, which is a foreign entity of concern. And after December thirty first would not be allowed. But if we have our contract signed and materials ordered, we've safe harbored them. Then we need to be able to actually begin investment. So that's basically spending five percent of the total cost before July fourth, twenty twenty six. If we do that, then on these projects, we have the ability, if needed, to complete them. Um, you know, for for four years. Otherwise, it's still possible to do it, but we have to really, really move quickly. So um and failure to really if we aren't able to do the uh the December thirty first one, you know, the Jackson Street is not as attractive financially as Ryan Road. And so it might be difficult to do. Whereas Ryan Road, probably we we could do it. It just wouldn't be as good a deal, right? So that's that's basically what that comes down to. So that's just kind of giving a sense of the timeline and and why we're moving this quickly. Um, Northampton High School is um a a bigger project. Um, and but also I think a really impactful one. So just to get everyone kind of up to speed on just like a quick geothermal one on one. Basically, it uses the relatively constant and moderate temperature of the earth to as a heat exchanger, so or as a sink and a source for both heating and cooling. Because the difference in temperature between the temperature you want inside and the temperature that's in the ground is very small relative to the temperatures that are outside. And that allows you to use electricity and a heat pump to move energy from the ground into your building or move energy from your building into the ground. And in heating, that's uh we we have a what we call a coefficient of performance of about five, which is to say we use one thermal, one unit of electricity to use to move four units of thermal energy. So that's just the basics. And this is really the most energy efficient and power efficient way to heat and cool buildings, period. There is no other, no other technology that's better than this for this this purpose. And NHS is in a really good position. First of all, this is a one big move. This is either our, depending on the year, our biggest energy user, biggest carbon emitter or second biggest, right? And with one big move, we can basically have solved the decarbonization goal for this really big energy user. NHS is ready in a way that very few buildings are. So we've actually tested the heating system. We've driven the temperature of the water down, down, down to test. And we've proven that we can heat it on a design day with water temperatures below a hundred and thirty degrees Fahrenheit, which is important for how these heat pumps function, uh because it's of I could get into the details, but you probably don't want them. In addition, the chillers that are existing there and that we depend on for cooling are well past their expected end of life and need to be replaced. And this system would be able to replace them. Further, we have boilers that are okay. But if we were to run them as the primary heating system, instead of just reserving them for backup um and for extreme cold temperatures, we would use their life cycles up a lot faster. But by reserving them, we can avoid having to replace them. And in terms of what type of investment this is, ground looped exchanger can last hundred years. In theory, it could last forever as long as we keep it balanced. Um, and heat pump equipment would have to get replaced over those hundred years, but lasts a very long time. So that's kind of the opportunity. Um, and the important thing that I that I need to reiterate is that doing nothing is not an option. At some point, very soon, those chillers will need to be replaced. Um, and again, if we run the boilers in regular cycles, they'll also need to be replaced. So we we we're near an inflection point. And if we can do something before we're forced to do something, then we're always gonna make better decisions. So um we hired a company that has a great deal of experience with geothermal engineering, design and drilling to do a feasibility assessment and kind of preliminary design for us. And I've actually invited them to be here. So when we get to questions, um if there's something that's too hard for me, uh, they they'll be here to help answer that. Um, but the basic story is that we're going to actually reduce electricity use, even though we're heating with electricity because it's so efficient. And particularly because our cooling is just gonna be insanely efficient. Um, we're now electricity is is costly. So our savings, it's still savings, but it's not forty three percent. So but it's it's still significant savings. We're savings saving on maintenance costs. We're certainly reducing carbon emissions and um and total energy use. Um, so this is kind of the the brass tax part of it. It's a very, very expensive thing to install, right? Our our overhead, our total cost is more is more than thirteen million dollars. But this is an extraordinarily opportune time to be investing in geothermal. So we're still eligible for the federal tax credit. Um, now we get dinged a little bit for financing it because we can't do it any other way other than to float a bond. But we get a really good mass save rebate, um which uh we have actually been negotiating and discussing with National Grid. Uh, then we also get federal tax credit because the uh the heat pumps are connected to a ground loop. They are also eligible. And so total incentives brings our net project cost down to a little bit over seven million dollars. The proposal right now and uh Finance Director Nardi has been working this out with me. But uh she basically, her proposal is to use a twenty year bond for about uh, well, to use the climate stabilization fund for about two million of it and to split the rest of it between uh short term and long term bonds. And the reason to do that is because we expect to get credits back uh in roughly the amount of the short term bonds. In addition, when we install a new geothermal project of this size with the metering capability and all that's that stuff, we are able to sell um alternative energy credits into the Massachusetts Alternative Energy Portfolio standard market. And that should generate about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue from selling these credits. So over ten years, that's a bit over a million dollars. So that's potential additional income related to this. So let's look at that framework. And you've got to compare, of course, what you're doing against all the against the other options. We basically have geothermal as one option. We have a boiler and chiller, so replacing both because that's coming as another option. And finally, an air source heat pump that can do the work of a boiler and chiller, but probably would require additional boiler for low temperatures, possibly retaining the existing boilers, and is much less efficient because at very low temperatures, it's less efficient. So what you can see is while geothermal has a higher upfront cost, it has a much lower lifecycle cost than the other options. But I want to add this this little wrinkle. Our consultants were very conservative. And they said, let's assume that we have the worst case scenario for de-watering, which is when you're drilling, you generate water and you have to like do something with the water. And if it's the worst case scenario, it's expensive. It adds about two million dollars to the project. If it turns out, once we drill our test well, that we're not in that worst case scenario, we could have a lower cost. And if you add in the alternative energy credits, geothermal is roughly at parity with the business as usual, replace them both scenario. And yet it has a much lower lifecycle cost. And so that's, again, lowering the the cost to the school. And to be honest, changing how we operate the school in a way that will actually probably increase comfort and good learning conditions. Right now, there's a tension between when do you run this giant chiller that's really expensive to run? And like allow a little bit of discomfort in the school? And when do you just like, okay, we just have to, and so you run it? And this would change that thinking entirely because you actually benefit by running the cooling when you need it. Because you're dumping that cool, that heat that that you're rejecting into the earth and saving it for winter. So you know, I'm giving you kind of the the sense that we've got our worst case scenario is what we're basing all this on, but we might be actually in a much better position. So this is a big project and there will be some uh logistical issues. So the I, the best place to install it without having to rebuild a sports field, which we really don't want to do, is to use the existing parking lot. And so there would be so displacement of of parking to sports fields. The idea is we begin drilling in spring of twenty twenty six, basically as soon as we get approval from city council to do the bonding and so forth. Um, and then we uh we we have to kind of have a sequence. And like I said, I brought uh our uh consultants with us because they can give you a lot more detail if that's necessary. But one of the neat things we can do is inclined drilling. And that allows us, look at all those dots in the parking lot. Each of those is a bore hole. With inclined drilling, we can reduce the portion of the parking lot that we need to actually drill in because we're able to basically create more bore holes in a smaller amount of space because we're kind of like sticking our straws sideways. Uh, there's no milkshake, so I don't drink your milkshake, but that that concept. So that is um a particular advanced drilling technique which minimizes disruption and parking displacement um and may allow us uh to work better. And again, the the real experts are actually on the call. Um, and this gives you kind of a sense of the amount of space that's taken up by drilling for a test well. Again, where we've got to do the de-watering onsite and and we've got all these components. So it is a construction site. Um, I recently went to Agawam where Brightcore is drilling a geothermal project for their high school. And I want to point out that school was in session. And this was, you know, in the morning on a weekday. School was in session and they were drilling, I mean, multiple rigs and they're they're drilling it. And so it sounds like a construction site, but it's, um, you know, it's not as loud as the typical levels of a construction site. So at the distances we were at. And in fact, the Agawam edu um like uh instructional portions of the school building are a lot closer to the drill site than our instructional portions of of our school building would be to, again, this this same drill site. So you know, the noise is there, but it's manageable. And they even have um sound attenuation screens that they can operate. So those are kind of some of the the issues that I anticipate people being at least concerned about because I'm certainly concerned about them, but also that we we have ways of solving those. So that's that's the end of my presentation. Um, and I'd be happy to take questions or hand you off to uh the experts that have with me.
Thank you. Member Agna.
Thank you so much, Ben. This is really exciting. Um, I had a couple of questions. One, did I miss it that you say would start in spring twenty twenty six? How long do you anticipate it going? Or did you say that already?
I I didn't say it and I should have. Um, I anticipate that it would start in spring, that we would drill like mad over the summer, try to get as much done as possible during the summer. I don't believe it's plausible that one could actually finish it in the summer. So it would go into the fall and possibly into the winter. Um, so there would be, you know, a little bit of parking disruption in the spring and um and in the fall. But when I talked to Tony uh Kuzners, he implied that there's actually a sufficient parking available on the other side of the sports field. People might not love it, but again, it's short term.
Great, and um the other question I had was when you said that there would be money going into the general fund when there is the the money that's realized from this. I because I I know there's concern in the community about our schools and making sure we have operating budgets.
I would say this is preliminary. So I have, in fact, I have not the alternative energy credits were something we had not calculated at the time when I shared this with uh the um uh with Charlie Nardi. So I don't, so no decision has been made as to how those payments go. My recommendation would be you should use those payments to pay off the bond that paid for the the geothermal, lowering the upfront cost. And I showed it in the graph as though it was lowering upfront cost because it's paying off your bond. But that's just my own personal recommendation and I'm not the Finance Director.
Right, and I would guess that city council will handle that too.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot, Ben. This was great.
Member LaBounty.
Uh, thank you. It's very exciting. Um, it's uh, it's great work. My, I have this general question that you may not be able to answer and that's okay, which is as you know, as you said, in some cases, doing nothing isn't an option. Um, because things will need to be done. Um, and at the same time, I know that as a district, we go back and forth about having the conversations about do we consolidate schools, do we not like? So we, I know we need to make like these infrastructure um investments and you know, sort of along the same pathway, we think have to think about what buildings will last, what won't last. And so I, it sounds to me like you're looking at some of these buildings going, yes, this is a building that would most likely stay or would be would be viable over time, like the like the Ryan Road roof is in good shape and let's think about that, you know, like that kind of thing. And um, so I'm just wondering if there's that kind of thought in mind is
Absolutely. Again, um, so some of this, of course, you're building a ship while you're flying it, right? So um, this, that's always part of this. We can't just fail because we were because of indecision, right? So
Right.
High school has like, no matter how much consolidation you did at the elementary school level, everybody everybody goes to the high school. And the high school's in really good shape. It's a well-maintained, well-operating building that has kind of like all the instructional characteristics you would want, you know, so it's, it. I can't, I can't picture somebody recommending against further investment in the high school. Whereas that I can at least see arguments for some other buildings where there are different types of challenges.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Sarafi Cox.
Yes, thank you. I have four and a half questions. So just to let you know. Okay. Start with the quick ones first. Why would we get a tax credit if we are not a taxpayer?
I'll answer these quickly as you go. Is that all right?
Yeah.
So part of the the Inflation Reduction Act, I think it was, anyway, under Biden, right? There was a change to allow nonprofits and municipalities to get what's they called direct pay. Basically you can get a tax credit and that was not wiped out by the big beautiful bill.
Fabulous. Thank you. Then just, I think that I have this correct, but just to confirm. So Ryan Road would be completely paid by the Climate Stabilization Fund. Jackson Street, there's no money from the Climate Stabilization Fund or bonds or anything going into that because it's just like a, yeah, okay. And then NHS, you, you had that, that good list. Okay. So there's two questions. Great. Sorry, one and a half questions. I'm curious then if you can talk a bit more about like, why would you not borrow all of it? Or why would you not put, take all of it out of the Climate Stabilization Fund? Like what are, you had mentioned something about.
Oh, we don't have, we don't have it. We don't have that much in the Climate Stabilization Fund, so that's not possible. You don't want to exhaust that. The, the mayor has kind of given me some guidance and if you want to correct me, Madam Mayor, go ahead. But my kind of guidance was think about ways to use the Climate Stabilization Fund to leverage additional resources. So that, you know, you shouldn't just be like spending it and then that's it. Is you spend it and it gets you other stuff. In this case, we could say you're spending it to lower the amount that we need to borrow and to generate the tax credits that we can use to get a much bigger project.
And it's better to, it's better to use some of the Climate Stabilization Fund and not borrow it all because of something you said about access to the credits?
Oh, no, 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 that, that, once we're doing financing, our credits are, we do get, take a haircut of 15%.
Okay.
That's just in the law. To be honest, I don't understand municipal finance well enough to explain to you why. Director Nardi said, we do need to do some borrowing. Like this is important. But I don't know how to tell you why she said that.
No worries. Okay. Then the carbon offset that you, that you listed in, I think it looks like just for the geothermal one, you listed the carbon offset. Is that a carbon offset of just the emissions from the heating and cooling of the building? Or does that also include basically like a reduction in the offset in terms of like the, the emissions of producing the thing and installing the thing in the first place?
Oh, so you're saying like the life cycle, the life cycle analysis, you're asking for like the total life cycle carbon emissions from building the product, getting the product, getting it here, all of that kind of stuff that's built into it, essentially your carbon debt before you even started running it. It's kind of.
Yeah, yeah. Like the idea of, you know, okay, I have a perfectly good, I'm not saying that the boilers at the, at the high school are perfectly good running or anything like that. I'm just saying, let's say I had a perfectly good running refrigerator, but I could buy a refrigerator that's new, that uses less energy on a daily basis, but it costs a lot of energy to create it and transport it to me. So those things might actually offset each other. So I'm just curious, do, are we putting any of that into our carbon emissions?
That is, actually, I don't, I'm not sure if Celine, the person who did this calculation for us in her report. Oh, there's, so she could answer that specifically what she did.
Yeah. So I, do you mind if I try to rephrase your question to make sure I'm answering it correctly?
Yeah, sure.
You're trying, are you trying to understand how we have a carbon reduction with this technology in a way?
Oh, I mean, I, I recognize why there would be a carbon reduction between burning fossil fuels and having, having geothermal. That's not my question. But I'm curious if the cost, the, the energy cost of producing the materials that you need to put in a new system were, were calculated into the ultimate reduction in our carbon emissions.
Yeah. So there's kind of, so I guess that would be the life cycle cost analysis that Ben was referring to. And we did do an analysis on that. How we do that is that we compare the carbon that we've had, that you would expect like a boiler or chiller to use over their life cycle, which is, you know, we have as 25 years. And then you, you add up all that carbon for those years and that carbon is kind of set other than the, well, at least for a boiler, because you are, natural gas will always emit the same amount of carbon. The chiller will use electricity, which has carbon, but the main assumption here that is really beneficial, beneficial to electrification is that Massachusetts has this really strong goal of becoming, you know, like reducing their energy, I mean, their carbon emissions from the grid over time. So eventually there's a point where we reduce, where the grid will reduce its carbon emissions so much that it's technically zero. So as the years go by and we hit different milestones where the grid is going to reduce its carbon emissions, it's gonna, the system using electricity is going to reduce their carbon emissions every year. So instead of, you know, just the cooling system having its carbon emissions reduced by using the grid, it's your heating and cooling system reducing your carbon over time. So, you know, you'll still be losing electricity, the grid is not 100% clean yet. But by, I think, you know, in 10 to 15 years, you're almost like halfway there. So.
That's not, that's not number Cox's question. So I'm, I'm getting it and I shouldn't have handed it off to you because I just wasn't actually sure if you had looked at this at all. So you're talking about embodied carbon, right?
So I didn't know what the term was, but yeah.
And so the, so I would say we didn't do that analysis, but I can tell you kind of generally, you know, for these kinds of systems, you usually pay back, if you will, your carbon debt for a geothermal system, especially of this magnitude, probably in a few months.
I can't speak to embodied carbon. I think the biggest advantage to geothermal is related still to the life cycle of the equipment. Because for a geothermal equipment, you have the heat pump that you need to replace only 25 years instead of 15 to 20 years. So by nature, by replacing it less, you need less materials to build that component and replace it instead of replacing, you know, the chiller every 15 years, which will almost double the amount of materials. And the ground loops going into the ground, those stay forever. So you do have that upfront material, which is all, you know, the piping that has a carbon, you know, cost to it. But that kind of stays there and over time it pays itself off because you never replace it compared to all the time you're going to be replacing a boiler. And these pipes last like 100 plus years, you know, that they're like utility lines that have not moved. So eventually, yeah, it, it pays off instead of having to constantly replace a large chiller every 15 years. Sorry if I misunderstood.
Oh, great. No, that was, that was really helpful. Yeah, thank you. And my last question is, I think somewhat related to member Carrie LaBounty's question, which was, my question is really like, well, you know, why not Leeds and Bridge Street School? So, you know, take that in, in kind of whatever vein.
I, I mean, I could answer, answer that one. So with geothermal, the, what, what you build this expensive.
Oh, I didn't necessarily mean geothermal specifically, just why not a project for them?
Well, I, I've done a project at Leeds, which just completed and is, seems to be working quite well. And has electrified about half of the school and provided much higher efficiency for the other half, which is an interim state while we get to the point where we can have the amount of money that we'd need to electrify the other half. And obviously add cooling, which is something we want. So Leeds worth investing in, we've already invested some and, and, and having some success. And in fact, that was a model we were using, essentially grant money to figure out, is this techn- technique, which is pretty inexpensive relatively speaking, going to work? And, you know, can we replicate it? The obvious place to replicate it is Jackson Street because they've got the same kind of like half 1950s, half later, one hydronic, one steam, you know, so they're very similar and so that you can replicate the pattern. Although at Jackson Street, we may end up kind of flipping it. Ryan is also a, a, a good school to invest in. And in fact, one of the reasons that you'll see some holes in where we put the, we spaced out the PV is because we need to provide cooling. We really need to be able to, and we need to be able to provide fresh air through a system other than the unit ventilators that are currently running. And so that's a, a system that will eventually provide heating, cooling and ventilation at high efficiency. But for the structure of that, that building rooftop units are probably going to be the easiest way to do it. So each one requires a different type of solution. And for Bridge Street, it does require a bigger discussion because it's going to require a bigger investment, which it would, regardless, it's not so much of an HVAC investment as an envelope and structure and all these other things. And so, so right now I'm busy trying to figure out options so that when a decision is made, I've got a bunch of reasonable options to put forward that can be, that can work.
Yeah. And by when a decision is made, you mean when a decision is made about consolidation or about the projects?
Or investment, like in other words, at some point, a serious discussion about that, which is not this, right? Which is just like about like, you know, what, what do you want? You know, what does the community want? What is it willing to pay for? You know, you're not going to get any tax incentives on those. You might get some help from MSBA, but you know, like we're talking real money. Stuff that makes this geothermal look a little bit small.
And can I also point out?
Oh, sorry. So the investment at Bridge Street School, you're thinking would be bigger than what you're talking about at the high school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I, could I just piggyback on that super quick? So the reason, so the, the solar that's on Bridge Street is because that roof was redone, right? So, and that's why, why you're recommending a canopy at Jackson Street is because that roof still needs to be done.
Correct.
But can you, is there, is there capacity to do more solar on the roof at Bridge Street? I can't remember.
I think there is. But again, you want to make sure that you're not dramatically revising that roof because of some sort of architectural change. Before you throw the PV on it. You know, so it, there are other better opportunities anyway. So Jackson, JFK needs a new roof. That we have applied to MSBA to start the process of getting a new roof. As soon as there is a new roof, I would hope to have a PPA, if not some other way of getting a lot of solar on there. And that's a much, the, the payback on that is much better than on a smaller, more awkward roof like, like Bridge Street. And same with the high school, eventually that one's going to need a new roof too.
Great. Thank you.
Is that your four and a half question?
That is my four and a half.
Okay. Member Stein.
I have two questions and then some comments. Less than Emily, which I feel good about because usually I'm the one with six and a half. So one question is around what happens if the subsidies and the incentives get obliterated in the time scale we're planning for and we decide to go forward? I know you said, obviously because of the way the financing model would work with a vendor for Jackson Street, it might not happen. But what happens with us if we're on the hook all of a sudden for more of the 13 million for the geothermal or for more of, you know, the, the funding for Ryan Road?
So I will hand you over to one of the, my experts who's here. Corey Klausman also works for Brightcore. And they've been doing so much drilling that they really are very keyed into all the situation with, with the tax credits. So Corey, if you're around, if you wanted to speak up. Otherwise, I, I can certainly just say that I have it on very, very good assurance that in fact, what you need to think about with geothermal is that it's drilling for energy. It's drill, baby drill. And so they've actually improved in some ways, the, the incentives for drilling for energy and geothermal just keeps on sitting into that pocket. And that's partly because, well, we can make our own political analysis of that, but it seems to be very stable and not going away.
I think I'm good now. Thanks, Ben.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Yeah. Great, great question, Michael. So, yeah, I, I've been working in the renewable energy space, not just in geothermal, but you know, solar as well. Residential and commercial solar and geothermal since 2011. We've seen a lot happen over that span of time with the incentives. What has held true, you know, every single cycle is that once you do commit resources to a project, if there are changes to legislation, there's a grandfather that, that takes place. There's a grandfather situation that happens where, you know, it would be detrimental to both red and blue states alike for there to be just a complete removal of incentives across the board. So what typically happens is they give it like a 12 month or an 18 month, you know, period of time with which when a project is in, you know, kind of that early conception stage through to contracting, once you're in contracts, then you're grandfathered in. So that is typically how it has worked in the renewable portfolio over time over, over the last decade or so. But also to Ben's point, I think it's important to understand that like commercial geothermal for heating and cooling was, was preserved in, in an otherwise, you know, gutting of clean energy incentives in, in the OBB BA. It was preserved and it was actually improved upon to his point. So we feel that it fits very well within the kind of drill, baby drill narrative of this administration. And, and, you know, the, they could have very easily lowered the period of time with which these projects can start before they start to sunset. But they did not. You have until close to 2033, 2034, providing a very attractive runway for this technology to really take off in the same way that, that solar did so many years ago.
Great. Thank you. So essentially based on the track record, if we're able to get to the contracted place before there's a change in the rebate structure, you know, the 30 plus 10 minus 50. Uh, before there's a change in the rebate structure, you know, the thirty plus ten minus fifteen financing. Uh, schema will essentially get that. I mean, crazy things could happen, but like if we look at the history. The recent history, if we're in contracting, um, and that's still on the table, we're likely to be okay. Okay. Um, great. Uh, the other question I had was about the NHS traffic. Uh, circle redesign and sort of the, I don't think it would actually impact where the geothermal drilling is going to take place. But in terms of managing um, the two projects overlapping and the impact on accessing the school, et cetera. That's one thing I was curious about.
Um, well, I I would say that um, we kind of looked at where that would be and tried to keep the drilling. Away from that. So so, you know, there there will probably be impact, you know, on this lower. Parking area for like equipment storage it as they're drilling these boreholes. And that all the work that's happening on the on the uh bus circle can be done simultaneously. They're just going to be kind of separated in space. I don't is if 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 that's satisfactory enough answer, I can get in, I can. Ask uh our drilling expert who's with us, um, who who may have worked with. Complexities of working with multiple projects in in proximity um and how she has solved that in the past.
Um, yeah, and I'm just more concerned about the actual logistical impacts for the operation of the school while those two projects might overlap. Right? Um, like, how are we going to actually have buses come in and out in some way that makes sense and that's accessible? How are we like, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces that would overlap. Um. And maybe there, you know, until maybe it's further along, there won't be those coordinated conversations. But I was just curious if there was anything already sort of thought about it in that in that pain.
I mean, I thought about it a little about as far as you as you've mentioned, which is keep them apart, right? So if you look at kind of where we'd be planning to start potentially, it's as far away from that. And so that by the time you've gotten there, but the the right answer is to have Tracy. Uh, I've been uh from Bright Core tell you stuff because she really knows her stuff.
Um, yeah, so I think it's important to understand that what you're looking at on this screen is is. One hundred percent conceptual. We've laid out some dots on the screen that we would tie back to a feasibility study. Um, at any given point, if you've decided that you'd like to move forward with the project, we would go in. We would conduct a feasibility study where we would do an actual hole in the ground. And then we would optimize what you have for space and what the the geotechnical information that we gathered told us. This would allow us to really look at your space and say, where is there a no go? Where do we need to stay away from? And we would take the site and say, okay, in this particular location. We are going to push the wells closer together and maybe put them on an inclination. Or we would drill them deeper as opposed to shallower and do fewer of them. There's opportunities for us to use high performing heat exchanges inside the well. I know I'm getting pretty technical. But what we put inside the well can also reduce the footprint of what we do outside of the hole. So there's a lot we can do. Um, it starts with understanding the heat loads of the building. And what the needs are for us to optimize what you want to, what you want to see from a heating and cooling perspective. And then we'll take the information from Mother Earth, and then we'll break it apart and work with the formation that we have. Say, how do we optimize it? Do you want me to stay away from this drive lane? Do you want me to stay away from the school? And then we will put together the best path forward so that we can optimize that. And that's what really Bright Core does is we come in as a design developer. Not only do we drill the holes for you, but we come in and say, what's going to be the best for this project and try to reduce the layers, right? Um, so what you're looking at is just a schematic at this point, getting you to kind of get your visual juices flowing. Um, and once you've kind of got a feeling for it, and we can say, hey, you know, Tracy, I don't want you near this drive path. And then I will say, I will get you out of that drive path. Um, and then I will, not every well on this. Property needs to be the exact same. So we will optimize areas where we can, and then we'll stay away from other areas.
I knew that I knew there was a that that was the impression. So I met her when I went to Agawam. And it was just like there was nothing that she couldn't do. The basic story I got.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, we will look at what you have for space available and really try to optimize it. But you, there's, there's many companies that will come in and they only know how to do it one way. Uh, we know how to do it a lot of different ways. Um, I've been doing this for thirty-five years and I can tell you. It starts with a feasibility study. And in Massachusetts, we have a fantastic program that's designed to give you some of the funding. Through Undaunted, through the Mass School Building Authority, there's various things that we can pull funding through that will get you kickstarted. To understand what this looks like in real life. And we can really optimize this drawing and put something together for you that's. This is pretty schematic and get yourself into something that's DD. Um, so that you can really start to understand what it will look like on your campus.
And uh Tracy, do you have a sense? Um, this is sort of a question for Ben too, but you. You mentioned the MSB. Do you have a sense like what the cost of design are for these projects? And how much we could get from MSB to offset that? And I guess, are they in the project costs we saw? Are they separate?
No, I so I can tell you the MSBA part of it, which is uh our windows are just a little too old. And so they just rejected us. But again, I've demonstrated with actual operation of the heating system that. It's that that geothermal is totally viable. So it's one of those things where we're not going to get help from them. But again, we showed you the economics. It's still, we can still make it work, basically.
But I guess like, is the the planning portion of the costs in the project budgets we saw, or is that on top?
Yes, that's that's part of it.
Great. No, thank you so much. That's that's really helpful. Um, I'm done with my questions. I just have sort of a a perspective to share. For everyone and for my colleagues. Um. I really like this. I am convinced that. It is um, at least in terms of upfront investment and costs, going to be equal to. Once you factor in the incentives, right? Without the incentives, it's you you're not going to do it. So I I'm worried not to get the incentives to do this when this is obviously a better, longer term investment for. This the district, right? Um, and I feel like the the estimates and the plans make sense, right? So like, I I I'm sold on that. Um. And my my issues are sort of like just bigger issues around how we think about these projects. How we think about our operational budgets and our capital budgets. So much of this last election we went through was about these questions. And so I know a lot of people looking at this are like, why are we spending so much time talking about investing in renewable energy? And we're not talking about investing in reading, or we're not talking about investing in these other things. And these conversations are connected, right? Um, even tonight, they're connected in the way we're talking about sort of leveraging this to reduce operation budgets, right? So like, we haven't really had a space to talk about that. Um, and we also can't do nothing while time marches on. But we also seem to be. In a position where we're acting as if we're going to have a school consolidation conversation. When the horse is long out of the barn, right? We're investing millions of dollars already in various schools. Would we just torch that money if we somehow decided to build a combined elementary? I don't I don't think so, right? And like, so making this investment, also both in Jackson Street and Ryan Road. Also binds our hands kind of in a positive way, right? But like, it binds our hands and constrains the type of conversations and choices we would make. And I think Director Wiel is doing a great job doing what he's tasked with doing, which is finding ways to make the city net zero. That can effectively utilize all the things that are out there. But from the school committee's perspective, our mission is to look at things much more broadly, and it's only one of our goals, right? And so um, I'm concerned that like a lot is moving forward without us having had these bigger conversations. And that the way these conversations have moved forward will constrain necessarily the choices we have and the decisions we can make. Um, and I was really grateful when I asked Dr. Wiel to come and visit us at Budget Property came, answered all of our questions. It was great. Um, tonight, I'm really grateful we're getting the presentation and asking for a vote. Um, but I hope. In this next term, we can have more transparency with what these contracts are. Like, it's even impossible to figure out what our ongoing debt load is that we're paying for out of the general fund budget every year. And what this will add to it, what's coming off, like, all of these questions that go into these bigger sort of fundamental questions about how we allocate resources. We never have that conversation. And this is a big step forward that's going to tie up some money. But again, we haven't had the conversation. And even in these capital conversations, they're all, you know, happening behind closed doors. So I really hope as we move forward, we can begin to have a lot more, you know. Transparency and um openness about the choices that we're making. And how certain goals are driving certain decisions or not, or how we weigh them against other goals. Right? Because these are complex, difficult things we're trying to solve together. And I think we can do a better job of that. And this is, there's no criticism of the director wheel at all. It's just prompting the the thoughts of this sort of large project coming coming to us. Um, and also just lastly, similarly to how, you know, we decided as a school committee to exercise some oversight. Over one of the working groups, we're similarly haven't really had much oversight or insight, right? Regarding the school consolidation working group, which I think has now been also merged with the net zero working group, right? We're going to get a presentation on that, I think, in January or February. And tonight, we're voting on this because we have to. Because of the timing, right? Which I get, but it's not really a great way to manage these questions or a body. As a body or exercise like appropriate oversight or vetting. So I'm hoping we can just try to try to do better. Thanks.
Um, so you know, Director, I do, I want to thank Director Ryle for, of course, his, you know, main job is to reduce carbon for the city. But I also have asked him to figure out how to reduce costs particularly for the schools. And I think these are excellent examples of how he's uh worked very hard to do that. Um, Dr. Bonner.
I I will be very brief because I do know that this is the school committee's time, but I want to thank Ben for, first of all. I'm glad that you had the opportunity to go out to Agawam during that presentation because I was unable to go. Um, and that it uh was resourceful to you. And then also uh to point out to everyone that, you know, this is moving towards one of our strategic. Uh, planning goals in terms of the net zero. Um, I know that there was quite a bit of comments um, beginning first with Member LaBounty. Who pointed out, you know, have we made that decision yet? And of course, Member Stein just uh pointed out that. There is a ex a presentation planned from the working group. And uh Ben has been working with us. He's been a source. He's been a resource uh for us in terms of. Um, helping us. And so what that group is currently doing is looking at the different models or configurations. And right now, um, projecting out some costs so that this body can take a look at what are the options? We're not deciding on that. You know, I know that people are making uh conjectures in terms of, you know, what buildings or whatever. But uh, we are going to point out the different models and what that model would look like. And then ultimately, this body would decide how we move forward with that. So I just want to reiterate that. And then the other thing is that, um, if you move forward with these projects, particularly the high school. Ben, I would need to know um sooner than later uh because of the logistics in terms of not only the disruption and the noise and the construction. But where you are currently thinking about drilling, uh, it would interfere in terms of our buses entering and exiting. Um, dropping off students. So um, and we just uh redesigned that with over the last two years. In terms of how we orchestrate the movement and flow of our buses. So we would need to think about that. And then, you know, is there going to be some kind of structure that's going to actually take up some of these parking spaces? Or is this just for the drilling point and this covered and we can then restore those parking spaces? I just kind of wanted to know that as well. Um, and so um, depending on what this body does tonight, and then I believe City Council also has to move this forward. Um, if we could work together with the the high school administration. So that we and uh Tammy uh Lieber in terms of what we need to do. In preparation for that particular construction. And I know Member Stein pointed out the two projects. So I believe that the bus loop project, although there were some suggestions, but that's that's in abeyance, I believe. So I don't, I don't foresee that going forward at the same time. Uh, because that would be a little bit much for us to kind of um maneuver. So I just wanted to point out so a couple of comments. I didn't have questions, but I just, I was hearing from the members and I just thought that. I wanted to point out that the work has been uh done. And I, and if you go onto our scorecard for the strategic plan, you really need to open the links. Because the minutes and presentations, they're all uploaded there. So there is transparency. You just have to kind of go into the links and read on your own. Okay, just wanted to point that out. Thank you, uh. Mayor, Sharon, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Superintendent. I I think Corey Klausman from Bright Core is probably going to answer some of the questions about covering and so forth.
Yeah, and this will be, this will be really quick. Um, yeah, but but great question. You know, it's one of the nice things about geothermal is that once it's in the ground, there's nothing sticking up above the ground that would stop you from. Um, from, you know, repaving or doing anything. As a matter of fact, our feasibility study and the costs associated with. Um, with uh or in that uh number that we showed included. Uh, the restoration, complete restoration of the destroyed area due to the well field or the warfield. So um, just wanted to make sure that that was very clear that like that that cost was considered as part of. Uh, the scope that we were um promoting.
Thank you. Uh, Member Eisenford.
Hey, um, just really quick. Um, thank you, uh, Director Wild. Really great presentation. Um. Really clear and uh I just, I want to comment that, you know, they seem like really excellent, forward looking and necessary projects. And I especially like the analysis that you showed us. That really details how our schools and community are going to benefit both short and long term from from the projects. So that's my first comment. The second one is is not to you, Director Well, um, but it's really just to the body. I, you know, I'm sitting here thinking. Um, that I really wish we would be doing that same kind of analysis when it comes to our children's development. And parent and staff day to day, day to day needs. Because an additional investment of this scope towards staffing, for example, would produce incredible long term developmental outcomes. And it just really made me think about that. We should be looking at our investments in um staffing. In the same kind of way, long term. Thank you.
Um, Member Stein, and then let's move forward.
Yeah, I'd um, I appreciate that sentiment too from Member Eisenford. Um. I um, I wanted to make a motion. Um, not sure if a vote is on this or not, or if we endorse it. Um, but um, I'd like to make a motion to um. I guess I'll say endorse. I don't know if we're approving, or do we, it doesn't matter what language you use?
I have, it actually does matter.
Okay.
Language from Leila.
Okay, um, so I would use that language. Um, I in.
It's three separate motions.
Okay, um. For the three projects, okay, um. Do you?
Is that language listed anywhere?
No, I'm sorry. It was not included. Uh, but um, maybe forward an email to one of us so we can say it.
Yeah.
Uh, I can read it. Um, Cassie, do you have?
Do you want me to display the language?
Um.
If not, Mayor, I have it and I can read it.
Oh, I have it and I can read it. I'm just. I just don't have it sort of separate. Um, would you, how about I read these three motions? And then um, maybe we can work on figuring out how to get them on this on the screen. But uh, so the for Ryan Road, it's a motion to approve the solar array roof project at Ryan Road Elementary School. And to direct the superintendent of schools to permit the city of Northampton and its vendors reasonable access to Ryan Road Elementary School. For the purpose of designing, installing, inspecting.
Reasonable access to Ryan Road Elementary School for the purpose of designing, installing, inspecting. Operating, maintaining and repairing the solar array project. For Jackson Street. It is a motion to approve the solar array canopy project at Jackson Street Elementary School parking lot and to permit the city in Northampton to enter into a solar power purchase agreement. And lease agreement with Solelect Energy Development LLC. That will give Solelect Energy reasonable access to the Jackson Street School Elementary School, uh, Jackson Street Elementary School parking lot for the purposes of designing, installing, inspecting. Operating, maintaining, repairing and removing the solar array canopy project. And to, and further to grant the superintendent of schools the authority to secure approvals on behalf of the school department. From D E S I or other agencies that may be necessary, uh, for the city and Solelect Energy to complete the project. And then. For the geothermal, it's a motion to approve the geothermal project in Northampton High School and to direct the superintendent of schools to permit the city of Northampton. And its vendors reasonable access to Northampton High School property. For the purpose of designing, installing, inspecting, operating, maintaining and repairing the geothermal project. So those.
Sorry, I would make that motion. So, so moved with the following addition. That way I don't have to reread it. I think we're good. Okay. Which is that the budget and property subcommittee will be. Updated on the progress of the projects, the contracts. The credits and the net metering as they play out.
Do you want to, uh, do you want any more specificity like quarterly? I mean, like the net rating, you know, like. For next hundred years for the geothermal or just?
I guess it's like really for the implementation and then the, the establishment of the rates and how they'll be divided, right? So I don't want to say come back in a quarter and then there's nothing to report, right? So like if it's like as, as it's developing, um, when the contract like. I guess let's say quarterly while the implementation phase is underway. Limited. And then if there's no reason to meet, we don't, we don't meet. Or we don't get the information because there's no update.
Okay, Ben, does that seem reasonable? Or achievable?
So a quarterly report on the three projects. Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Okay.
Great.
Uh, so the motion was made by Member Stein and seconded by.
I'll second it.
Member Davis. Um, Member Seraphy Cox.
No, I was just gonna either make the motion or second it.
Okay. Any? Further discussion to the motion?
Is this all three motions we're voting on?
Yes, all bundled together. Let me just scroll through, make sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay, I don't see any hands, so roll call please.
Mayor, Sharon?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Eisenfeld?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
She had to leave.
Oh yes, sorry. She left at eight oh two for your record.
Thank you. Um, Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all right. Thank you very much, Director Wild. Thank you, Bright Core. Um, next, well, we'll do this at city council. Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, how's everybody doing? Does anyone need a quick recess?
Yeah, could we take a brief recess? Would be great.
Let's do five, let's say we'll be back here, um, at nine o'clock.
Great, thank you.
Looks like folks are coming back. Uh, Zach, I'm gonna count us back in. And we are back. After our recess and we are moving on to reports and recommended actions. And first up is the superintendent's report with an out of. School time, uh, update. Dr. Bonner.
Okay, so good evening to everyone. So I'm going to actually apply some of the, the learning, uh, from this past week's conference. Or current conference. And there was a mention of a update from the, concerning the bathroom, uh, bathrooms at the high school. So that was not on the agenda. However, I want to refer school committee members that I did update you and please refer to your email of October 31st. For the weekly update that has, um. Some comments there from me. So today I'm focusing on the out of school time, uh, specifically. With running a pilot. At Ryan Road for the next school year. So very quickly. The district conducted surveys in 2022 and 2024 to assess the need for adding out of school time care at all of our four elementary schools. It is the administration's intent to pilot an after school program modeled after Leeds Elementary School, their late birds program. In the 26, 27 school year. This program will run in conjunction with the already well-established YMCA program. Providing more opportunities and choice for caregivers. It is the desire of the school committee and the district leadership to provide more opportunities for caregivers. And I assume that that is one common ground that we do share. The target audience for the program are children from Ryan Road Elementary School. All children in the school community are eligible to enroll. And participation in this program will be fee based. The current school enrollment at Ryan Road is 220 students. And currently the Y program that is running this current school year, I believe is capped between 40 to 50 students. And I believe only 33 or so are registered for the course of this year. I did want to point out in terms of the enrichment program. So all four of our elementary schools has an enrichment program. The concern is that, um. For Ryan Road this year, there has been a real difficulty in terms of staffing the enrichment program. Thus, it has not been able to run. And so our staffing, we rely on par professionals, we rely on our teaching staff, we rely on outside people who may want to come in and to teach a course or a class. And it has been a challenge for Ryan Roads program to get off the ground this year. So this was the intent and I know that, um, this past Monday. There was a, a request from the budget and property, uh, school, the subcommittee. That they would like to see implementation of the after school program. At all of our elementary schools next year and not run a pilot. Again, still using the Leeds program as a model. And so, uh. Similar to what I shared with them on Monday, we recognize a common goal with our families, providing accessible, reliable and high quality. Before and after school care. And so currently the third party YMCA program. Has not proven to be a viable option for some families. Due to limitations in capacity or, or accessibility. But there are some families who do use the program. And a matter of fact, if we did not have the YMCA at Ryan Road this year, there would have been nothing provided for our caregivers in. That site or portion of the city. So the primary goal of having a pilot is to duplicate the successful Leeds early late bird operational model. Assess program effectiveness and directly address critical concerns related to staffing. Managing different school sites and confirming genuine stakeholder need. Running for one full academic year, the pilot will provide the concrete data needed to inform a sustainable and fiscally responsible district wide expansion. And so considering this program, we will need a startup cost. And if, if we were to do. All of the elementary schools, we would, that have to consider what those startup costs would be for those different, those alter, alternative programs. So. In a nutshell. Uh, I am recommending to the school committee that. The district approve a single site point, uh, a single site pilot before an after school program for the 26, 27 academic year. At Ryan Road Elementary School before going to multiple sites. And that is it. That's all I have to say, you know?
Sorry, I muted. Um, Member Stein, then Member Miller.
Yeah, I'm, um, I'm kind of confused. I know we had this recommendation in August and the body referred this matter to budget and property for oversight. And at our October meeting, we voted to recommend to the body. That we move forward with a district wide. Uh, program. That's the recommendation we're bringing you tonight. We, as part of the motion we made in October. Asked Dr. Bonner to explain her rationale for doing the. Sort of partial rollout with the mixed situation. And with both, both essentially both services at Leeds, I mean, at Ryan Road. And I. And I, I was, I had asked that that actually be on the agenda, either under the budget and property listing or as a separate agenda item. So I'm really confused the way all of this has been listed. Um, it seems like I should probably present that now since we're discussing this. So the recommendation from the budget property school committee came after reviewing the surveys and all of the findings of the working group, talking to the business manager about the financial viability of running our own programs, speaking with the coordinator of the Leeds program and what it would take for us to stand up and operationalize district wide program. And speaking to members, at least a few members of the working group itself. So we spent a lot of time in the data figuring out what was viable. And from our perspective, having looked at all of that information, if our goal is to provide more flexible and affordable out of school time childcare, we have a long running experiment in Leeds that has proven it viable. And we have enough data to say it's time to to move it to the rest of the the district. One of the recommendations that the coordinator of the Leeds program made to us was to consider, and these are all things we would have to figure out if you accept this recommendation from budget and property and decide to go forward. But I'll list them here because they might help with deliberation. Um, one thing she suggested we think about is maybe starting the rollout at a cap of the largest amount of capacity for the current programs from the Y. So the largest capacity, I believe, is around 80 or 85 students at Jackson Street. So if we rolled out that sort of capacity to all the other three elementary schools, it might be a good first year for us that we can then grow on. Um, the estimated startup costs are projected, we've heard like between 10 and 20,000 per school. So while that sounds large out of a $48 million plus budget, it's a very small investment to get a self sustaining program off the ground, which would be cheaper for our caregivers and more accessible. The other thing she suggested we look at is the sort of the sliding scale, right? So like, we could look at this in a number of ways. You remember, we voted to increase the hourly tuition rate at Leeds earlier this year. Um, I think we raised it to like $7 an hour. And part of doing that is to keep up with sort of contracted costs. But they also have a free and reduced model there depending on families eligibility. So if we're going to do something district wide, we could also rethink that. Maybe we could have more of a scale than just free and reduced in a set hourly rate. We could look at it a number of ways to figure out what makes the most sense. But in all sort of scenarios, it's cheaper for our caregivers, right? Some of the difference really has to do with the different types of licensure we have and operate under the Leeds program with, which is essentially, we don't need licensure because we're a school. The Y has EEC licensure, which limits the amount of students they can have and some other programmatic aspects, right? If we were to move forward with the superintendent's recommendation, there'd be questions about the YMCA licensure of the two programs operating next to each other due to the space and staffing requirements for their license. So like, even if we were to go with that program, there's a lot of questions we would have to address. I guess. You know, lastly, I just say, you know, we've been talking about this for four or five years. It's been a difficult conversation. There's no, from my perspective, criticism of the Y, right? I think they have to operate in a certain model under a certain licensure that can constrain what they can offer, right? And that's just structural. It's not something that they can overcome. I think if we look at it from the perspective, how will we best serve our families? How do we provide more affordable and flexible childcare? We have a homegrown model that has done that consistently and has built up a sizable surplus account. And if they can do it, um, we can do it as a district. And that's all the data and trial run that we need. Um, I think now is the moment to move forward with this change. And if we vote to do it now, we'll be able to make it happen by the beginning of next year, we'll be able to give the Y enough notice so that they understand this change and can plan for it. And we can figure out other logistic details. So I, I hope you'll accept the recommendation of the budget and property subcommittee and support our recommendation to move to a district wide program modeled on the Leeds program to start in the fall of 2026. Thanks.
Thank you, member Miller.
So my comment is only that as a, I know this is a while ago, but as a working parent that worked out of town until five o'clock or later, I needed more flexibility in terms of the pickup time. And what I found in the past was that the school run programs ended much too early for me. And I could not enroll my children because I couldn't get them. So I think that has to be taken into consideration for working parents. It's very difficult to, you have to have some flexibility in when you are able to pick up your child. And sometimes the Y programs offer a later pickup time. So I just think that has to be taken into consideration. And if you're going to do it district wide, that has to be figured out first.
Okay, thank you, member Agna.
I mostly have questions for Dr. Bonner. Um, I'm wondering about, as you are endorsing a pilot program at one school, the capacity you might be able to envision for trying to work with three schools versus the one. I'm, I'm saying that only because it may be different now, but when I was a principal of a school, that was a complex issue for the after school. I am in total support of after school programming. We know that our families need it. In fact, having been an early childhood educator, we know that schools don't really provide for working families. Why we do have to do something for an after school is because we want to support families. I just know that it's a complex issue to install in a school. Having again, been the principal of a school where we had an after school program, we had an after, it was an enrichment program that went until 4:30, I think, and maybe that's what you're referring to, member Miller. But the Y provided daycare or after school care. And it was possible to do that simultaneously. And why I'm asking also about capacity of schools and your knowledge of how schools could incorporate their own programs. I had to do a lot as a principal to be a part of the after school program. It is something that I knew was worth it and I wanted to support the families. But it also is something that needs some kind of process, I guess, of understanding what it's going to entail at the administrative level, what it's going to entail in terms of recruitment of staff, and then also for all of the other things that, to be honest with you, when the Y was there, I didn't have to think about because they were able to hold many of the aspects of an after school program that we couldn't do for an after school enrichment program. So those are sort of the questions that I have about where we go with this. I again, think that we need to eventually have after school programming across the district in an affordable way and a flexible way. I just don't know. And if it's a recommendation from the working group that we start with a pilot, I'm wondering if that's maybe the way to go.
All right, uh, just to respond to your question. So so the second working group that has really been working on the pilot for Ryan Road. By the way, my recommendation to the body is to do the pilot, but the budgeted property is to go multi-site. They want the all four elementary schools to have an after school program. And so as we were in the working group, we looked at staffing. And so in terms of the staffing, we really have been taking advantage of the administrators, particularly at Leeds, our former principal who was did a lot of managing and supervising even of the coordinator. And before she left, she was really doing payroll and some other staffing, some other, some other things that she would have to be responsible for. Also dealing with any disciplinary measures that would also maybe affect the, the course of the school day. And so she took no compensation for that. And the Leeds program, they go until five, 515. The Y program goes until six, so it is a longer day. The Leeds program can offer that flexibility in terms of once you have registered your child, you can choose what days you may want to drop your kids off. But if you have that affiliation with them, you also can just do spot days, like if you need that care. So there's a little bit more flexibility in terms of the Leeds program versus the Y program, who as Members Stein pointed out, does have the EEC licensure that has specific requirements that pretty much dictate the ratios of a student ratio and so on. There's also DESI requirements that we would have to follow as well doing after school. And then also talking about staffing, we looked at the fact that each school building would need a site coordinator, similar to what the coordinator does for the Leeds program. And then we would need someone who would manage all of those four site coordinators. We looked at the structure and how that would break down in terms of the operating and the management, the number of instructors we would need, the para educators. The other component is too, is that something that the YMCA does, that they offer access to all children, but they really don't have the capacity to meet the needs of some of our students who have IEP needs. And so we would need to really think about if we need paras. We should have a nurse on call. But now with some new regulations that are coming into play, we probably will need a nurse at each site and that's after school time. So we have to look at that staffing as well. And then the business office has it in a part of this as well because now you're processing payroll for some additional programs. And then a real concern is about staffing, getting staffing for these positions. Leeds primarily you have staffing that are par professionals, some college students who take some of that time. But as I said, Ryan Road has been struggling just to even get their enrichment program off the ground this year, which was unusual. It did run last year. And then so we looked at the staffing, then the next thing we looked at projections in terms of salaries and what the cost would be. We all also talked about the activities and the curriculum planning. The licensure, we would not pursue right away. We would have, you know, we'll let the, the program run and maybe think about, do we want licensure? Because there's another component to that that allows us to take vouchers. But then it, then it handcuffs us in terms of the restrictions that the licensure would place on us and what we would have to do and comply with. And then the recruitment and enrollment, the recruitment, we would need to hire our staff pretty much in the spring, early spring of the year and really begin to open up registration for our caregivers to enroll in those programs. And we need someone who's going to be able to run that, to, to plan that. So it's easier to do it with one program at the start to see how it goes as opposed to all three buildings preparing for that as well. And then let's see, the program fees, we already know, you all talked about the fees for Leeds programming. Last year you actually increased them. We have that structure in place. We would utilize that. We may ask the school committee to rethink what those fees are now with the additional staffing that we would need in order to meet the needs of our students. And so we really have been having these conversations. The other component is that the YMCA, you know, that component. We know that there, you, you have a school building that houses about 200 plus students. So you can run multiple programs in one building. You would have to work out the logistics of who uses what space scheduling, you know, how to shift, who goes into the gym at a certain time, who goes into the cafeteria. And there's other spaces to be utilized in the building. So that's something that would have to be logistically worked out. So I know that regardless of whatever this body decides, that we all have the same common goal. And that is to provide after school care for our families who have that need. And it's just a matter of how fast we go with it or how slow we go with it and make sure that it's efficient and it's that it can sustain itself and, and actually run itself after we initiate, then hopefully the money that comes in through tuition and so on will sustain those programs. So we've been really having these conversations and if we are to do it multi-site, we would just have to, you know, what the conversations that we've had, we'll just have to multiply it by three and think about where we're going to get the funding to start this up and be ready for it to roll in the next school year. So hopefully I answered those questions. Okay, I know it was a little long winded, but I wanted to just kind of point out those things because you were asking really about our, our program and financial plan and how this is going to roll out and what it would look like pilot versus multi-sites.
Thank you, member LaBoundy.
Thanks. I, I have to say that this is of all the things that people may have contacted me about, this is probably one of the most common. And I, I, there's always a lot that you have to think about when you do these kinds of programs. We do know that Leeds program is successful. And in speaking, you know, with Bobby, it certainly is possible to make it work. And it did not appear that it would be insurmountable to have the, the startup or the ongoing cost that, that may not be accurate, but that was what I took from my conversations of our conversations. Certainly with details, there's always details in there. I think I tend not to think in dichotomous ways of all, only one or only the other. And that we may want to think about how to do why and some kind of the program within the schools because they serve different purposes. And I'm not saying the long term to do that, but to do that as a way to transition. The Y was not as flexible as the Leeds program was. I had kids in, in each program for a while. Also, there's things about the Y can take a voucher. We can't at this point. However, what happens with the voucher versus, versus not is that the people who always hold the most are not the people who can't, who, who have the free or reduced, or the people who can afford the Y on their own. It's the people who ride the line, who are always the people who miss, miss out, who, who can't afford something like the Y. And we don't have a good alternative. So I feel strongly that it's more than just one school that has that experience. And I, I feel like we should do our best to broaden it further. And I'm all for a pilot. I, I do believe in pilots. I think, you know, you, you study it, you test it and, and figure it out. But I think I've heard over and over and over that this is a really important issue. And I think that we need to listen to that and try to do our best problem solving around this. And, and I also agree that the Y has been a good partner. And so we don't want to just say all or nothing, but I really do want us to think as big as we can with. But I really do want us to think as big as we can with this. And, and maybe as we think along, we have to say, you know what? We can't do all of them. It isn't going to work. But I think initially, just sort of to, to think and plan that way would serve our community better in this particular instance. That's, that's my thought around it. And we may find as we go that we have to change our minds or we have to start smaller again, maybe. I don't know. But I, I think that we need to do as best we can.
Okay, thank you. Member Davis.
Hi, again, my, I had my camera off because my connection is kind of shaky. Much of what I was, wanted to say has been said, but I, I listened to the budget and property present presentations. I think that Dr. Bonner's point about the points about the pilot are really well taken because we want to have quality. And I think that we all agree on that, I think. And I think that member Agnes' point about her experience as an administrator and the reality of the commitment that having these multiple humans of multiple ages, which hasn't really been mentioned either, that if you've got K to five in your building, that's the, the, the people that you're hiring need to know how to manage that. So I'm, I'm thinking a lot about staffing and quality staffing that doesn't turn over, that parents can count on. Like I know as a, a parent too, just like Member Miller, I was always the last parent to pick up my kid and it's a scramble and you need to know that someone's going to be there that really know your child and are really taking care of them. And the coordinate, I, I'm thinking a lot about the logistics of it. And I absolutely agree with Member LaBounty too. Some of the majority of, not a majority, large quantity of emails that I've received have to do with this as well. Because it's, it's urgent. People need this. And so I, I guess I could go either way about this, about the pilot or not, because I think that parents really need this. But it needs to be something that parents can actually, actually count on, that it was well thought out. Not to be taken lightly, which I don't think anybody is, but thanks.
Yeah. Member, let me see, Member Miller. Oh wait, no, Member Miller, you've spoken already. Member Weizenfeld.
Thank you. So, you know, as you know, both Carrie and Mike and I are on the Budget and Property Subcommittee, and I do agree with our recommendation, I think Member Stein laid it out very clearly, all the data we reviewed, all the people we spoke with. Look, every time you start a new project, there are going to be issues. There are going to be things to be worked out, right? We have to think about how late the program can run and if we, if we're going to get staffing. This is true for every new project. I've only been here since January of 2025, but I understand we've been talking about this since 2021. And we really need to do bold things to show our caregivers that we hear them and that we support them. And I think that given the success of the Leeds program, both programmatically and financially, fiscally, I don't see this as a huge risk. Will it be, will it be a lot of work? Will we need to solve, you know, some issues, including issues of startup monies? I've also been doing a little extra research into this and I think we, I think we should consult with Seven Hills CCRNR. And it's my understanding that public schools are usually exempt and don't require a license to accept vouchers. So I think that if we wanted to accept vouchers, I think there is a path towards that even without being licensed. And I think that that deserves more exploration. So I think, you know, I agree with Member Miller and Member LaBounty about that there is urgency and there is real urgency. And I, I think we should move forward with implementing the Leeds model at our other elementary schools.
Bobby, did you have a response to? No? Or, oh, okay.
Just waiting.
Oh, you're gonna wait? Okay. I have, I have a couple of questions. Dr. Bonner, how does Leeds handle absences? So if some, if a staff person is absent, you know, during the day, how, how do they, are there subs for the early bird, late bird program? How does that get handled? Also, it has, have we talked to the, since it's, this is mostly going to be teachers and paras? If I'm understanding it correctly, have we talked to NACE? Are they interested? Is it sign that they're interested in replicating in the different schools? And then I want to make sure that we come back to what Zara's question. I think I heard someone say that there are high school students that help at Leeds. And so I, I want to ask whether, so it sounds like that is possible. My question was, was that possible? Because I know with the different end times of day, start and end times, I don't know if that's hard for the high school students. So I'm curious about that as well. Okay, so in terms of the subs for the Leeds program, I would have to ask Gabriella just to confirm. But I know that in our discussion, she shared that she sometimes overstaffs where she finds herself, not only as coordinator, will have to go and fill in for a staff member, but the Leeds program itself, which is really nice how staff who could, you know, they could be hired for maybe two out of the five days or they could flex their time in terms of the hiring so that you don't, you don't have to commit to the five days a week for providing that support. So it gives some kind of flexibility for staff if they wanted to do this. And secondly, no, we have not had the conversation with NACE yet about, about the the multi-site after school programs. And I think that they will have a lot to say in terms of the, the rates being low. And one reason why we may not be getting staffing. But it, it doesn't just rely solely on our current teachers and paras, but we're looking for outside people who may want part-time positions or college students. And yes, Leeds, I believe, does use high school students on occasion. But that was a conversation that we also had in our work group in terms of how can we involve our high school students? But it'll be tricky because that's the fourth period of the day. Our elementary finishes at two, two-ten. And so if that happens to be a, one of their independent learning or internship that they want to have, that is a possibility to kind of set that up and give students an opportunity, especially if they want to go into education, pursue a career in, in education. So future educators would be great. And so those are all things that we considered and talked about. So again, we were thinking small scale for next year and not large scale. But if, if this is the direction in which the school committee wants to go, then we will have to begin engaging the other principals in the other buildings to say, okay, this is what the school committee is proposing. And so we need to kind of work out the logistics and how this is going to work out. All right. Thank you. Okay, Member Stein. You, Member Miller, at your, Member Stein's first, then it's you, Member Miller, for your second round, and then I'm going to Bobby.
I just want to clarify a few things. As part of the due diligence we did as a subcommittee, and I did as the chair when this was referred to us, was talk to the president of NACE about this and ask if there were actually any concerns and what she actually felt about the staffing possibilities, what issues they've had at Leeds. And she was enthusiastically for this. And without speaking for her, my impression is that this provides an opportunity for some of our lowest paid staff to pick up additional hours at their contracted rate. It also provides the opportunity for teachers and other educators in our building to pick up hours at their contracted rate. So they feel good about this arrangement, right? Essentially, you're keeping the labor and giving priority of the labor to our employees under their union contract. So I got no pushback at all and encouragement for this. Okay? The other thing I want to clarify is that we seem to be equivocating about two very different things. There are enrichment programs and then there is aftercare. So for Bridge Street, for example, right, there is, Bridge Street has aftercare enrichment programs called BASE, right? You pay for those. They run for a certain number of weeks in a row. They are not childcare. They do not run the same amount of hours and they don't run continuously. So the Y that operates there does offer childcare, right? So there's a difference between after school enrichment and out of time childcare. And what we're talking about with the Leeds model is extending out of time childcare to the other schools. And I remain baffled why we need a pilot when we've had a pilot. It's called the Leeds program. And the pilot that's proposed isn't actually a pilot. It's like, let's do it alongside the Y. So the data we get won't tell us what it would be like if we just did one site as a shift, right? It would tell us about the particularities of doing two programs at the same site for one school, right? I, I think the Leeds data is more instructive on what we can expect, right? So I don't see the utility in, in rolling it out in this very piecemeal way. And I think there are a lot of challenges. Yes, we can do hard things and we can figure them out. I think we have enough due diligence and data to understand that this is feasible and that the programs can also support the coordinators through their tuition models, right? So like, this is all possible. What we need is the will to say, we're going to try something that will benefit our caregivers in our district and provide more flexibility. We will have all the same problems that the Y has when someone's absent. We will have all the same problems that anyone would have on any given day operating a program like this. But we can do it. And because of the licensing, because of the history we have with Leeds and because of the economies that we have to work with because we're a district, we can do it at a cheaper rate and extend real savings to our caregivers. And we can provide care to students with disabilities who can't get that from the Y. So in terms of equity, in terms of affordability, in terms of efficiencies, it, it makes sense to do this. It's hard to make a change. And it's hard to make a change when there's a community partner that's been really valued and is really valued, right? And I understand people's trepidation. But if we punt this again for a year, we're going to have the same conversation we've had for four years. It's sort of a moment where we have to decide, are we going to do something or not? Are we going to take a real step forward or not? And I, I hope that we do. I'd make a motion that the, make a motion to move forward with a LEED-style program for the fall of 2026.
A second.
Sorry. Motion's made by Member Stein, seconded by Member Weizenfeld. Could you say that motion again? Because I didn't hear district-wide. I just heard a LEED-style program.
Yep, sir. It's a, the motion is to move forward with a district-wide LEED-style program for fall of 2026. Right? So we would have to do the work between now and then to determine startup costs, who are going to hire, et cetera. Like this is the time to do it and enrollment, starting late in the spring into the summer so that parents can, can know what's happening for the school year.
Okay, Member Miller.
Well, my, Member Stein made one of my points, which was that there is a very big difference between the childcare and enrichment. And I think that I'm going to agree with Member Agna that if, if it's an enrichment program, then it really means that the principal and this has to be involved because it's, it's a lot of work. And I'm not disagreeing with rolling it out across the district because every one of the elementary schools is different. But I really do think that if you're really making it equitable, you really have to address the caretakers that cannot get there at four o'clock. And that's one of the elements that has to be looked at to make this accessible to every single parent. So, but it is important that it be a distinction between just childcare and enrichment. And that's, that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Bobby, you're up.
Okay, so I just want to say that I feel like I did give general advice as far as like the Leeds program and they are doing good and they do have a good balance. But I have not really had an opportunity to look at all the numbers for for elementary schools. And we just started that, or the other three elementary schools. We just started looking that. I was just a part of the, the working group for two meetings so far. And there's a lot of questions that have been raised in that. And to run solid numbers is kind of hard because there's so many varying factors, like how many would be on reduced? How many would be on free? How many would pay the full tuition? How many are going to go for three hours or one hour or two hours? There's just so many variables that financially, I don't want to commit to say that we could definitely do the other three elementaries as successfully as we have done Leeds, which is a well-established program. I will commit to the fact that I did say that Leeds has done well and, you know, is in good shape and is running a good program. Leeds has also taken in some grant money. That's going to remain to be seen as contract amounts go up. So teachers get, maybe not teachers, because that doesn't go up that much because they get the 35 per hour. But paras who get their hourly rate or overtime rate, there's just a lot of things that I haven't done financially. If I looked at, again, like the whole program, if we used all para educators, that could be. But if we took, say, one of our schools and they had all free and reduced enrollees, they might not take in the income that we need. Which again, if you go district-wide, those are all things that we'd have to consider. So I'm not saying for either way, I'm not saying to run the pilot and I'm not saying to start the, you know, for all three. I'm just saying that I have definitely not run all the numbers, all the scenarios with the information that I've been given to date. For instance, I did get something from Gabrielle, excuse me, that says, you know, how many staff members and what hours they work, but those staff members aren't identified. Are they paras? Are they teachers? Are they outside workers? The tuition, I don't have the full tuition as far as how many students. So I guess my point is just, I'm not able to give a good financial analysis of running a program. So I think I would be in favor of running the, well, running the Ryan Road program. running the, well, running the Ryan Road program just to see where we're at and how that works out. So that's where I'm at.
Bobby, can I ask just a clarifying question? So how long, do you feel like you could do the analysis? Or are you saying there are too many unknowns to be able to do it? Or like, would you be able to bring us more data by like the next meeting?
I could definitely bring more data if I got clarification on, you know, like, and like I said, I've been to only two meetings so far on the, with this meetings that they've had for the Ryan Road program. But yeah, if I had like specifics, like what type of employee are they paraeducators? Are they teachers? Are they non-district employees? How many hours? What is the tuition rate? You know, how many do we expect that we'd get at the full $7 an hour? How many would be at $4 an hour? You know, that sort of thing in order to weigh what we need to know financially. So I could definitely, if I could get more concrete and I, I have had some calls into Gabrielle, I have not gotten back to her. As you know, we had a holiday and I did take a day off, so. Yeah, I think if I had more concrete things, I could come up with something. There's, there's a lot of variables here, a lot of variables. So.
Okay, thanks Bobby. Member Gacy.
Let's see. So I was wondering why why we're so sure that we can staff all these programs at once, the three other schools, when we seem to have trouble getting paras and to do regular schoolwork. There's usually positions empty and the pay for teachers isn't that great? And the point that Bobby raises that you know, what if one school has all all kids that need free and reduced pricing? When we're looking at Leeds as a model, I'm not sure that it is true, but my sense is that in that neighborhood, there are fewer free and reduced. Now, maybe that's not so because I'm also thinking that they do sometimes qualify for Title I forms, but it just it just seems to me that there are so many variables that, that Bobby was looking at that I don't feel comfortable myself making a decision between these models until we have more facts of the nature of what Bobby was recommending. Because you know, what if you can't get a full, a staff at one school? And the others are up, up and running. That's not equitable either. Or maybe you start out with smaller pilots with not so many kids at each school. I don't know, it just I, I'm finding it hard to make up my mind which way to go. Cause this is a much bigger jump than what I thought we were prepared for. I mean, I had no idea that of what the budget and property was going to recommend as an alternative that we immediately start. You know, bringing in all the three parties, which I think is ideal, but it's also expensive. So I'm conflicted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, member LaBoutte.
Thanks. So I had two, two things. I, I wanted to clarify a little bit of the motion. Because I, and, and member Stein helped me know this. I think the motion was that we would attempt to move towards the district wide, understanding that there are all these different things that need to be addressed along the way. Not sort of an all or nothing, like we absolutely know the Y's out. I guess I would just want clarification on, on what exactly the motion is that people are, are voting on. So you know, that after doesn't have to be right now. And the, the second thing is that there will always be a lot of variables. Because each school is so different. So you can, we can do whatever we want at Ryan Road. And Bridge is going to be a completely different story in terms of its ability to have tuition, its ability to staff, it's so all we're doing is putting off the inevitable in each place. You know, like, and it might be, it might feel like you can take off a little bite and chew that, but you're still going to have to think when you add a school, oh, should we peanut butter this and spread it district wide because they're not going to be able to afford it? So I, I think that I don't think we should be fearful. I think we should approach it with this, with the idea that what we're trying to do is put this in place. We may find we have roadblocks that don't allow us to do it. But why start off that way? I, I, I feel like we should start off with the, with the energy to say, let's attempt this. Let's, we don't need to say the Y's out. We don't need to, we don't need to be so dichotomous in our thinking about this. But we do, we do need to, I believe, be less fearful about the variables and more willing to take them on. Knowing we're going to run into the all that, we're going to be like, oh, we don't have enough staff at this school. Or what are we going to do? Like, we have to reduce the number of slots we can take because we can't get the staffing right for that school. We're going to run into all of that. But, but so what? I think if we want it, we do it to the best of our ability, you know? That's, that's my feeling.
Okay, member Agna.
So understanding the complexity of a, a school district and I think staffing at an administrative level is pretty thin. That I don't think, I don't know if it's a friendly or an unfriendly amendment, but I do feel that we need to set aside money and have a district wide coordinator for after school to can do this. I, I don't know who was going to do this. Seriously, this would be, I mean, you can't ask the principals to do this. I know that the model at Leeds is that there is a coordinator. If we vote tonight, or if we put it off to next month and say yes to four schools happening, somebody's got to step in and do this. And I, maybe I'm wrong that there are people to do this, but I, I can't envision it at this point. And there really needs to be support from the district for doing the, all the startup stuff, which is big. It's very big. So friendly amendment? We set aside money to have a district coordinator if we vote for this?
So we don't do friendly amendments anymore?
Okay, sorry. So an unfriendly amendment? No. Sorry, I'm kidding. I can't see how we could go, we can't, nobody, there's nobody who can do this. Except for if we had somebody who was overseeing all of it. Thank you.
Okay, member Stein.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with member Agna's comments and I really appreciate member LaBoutte's comments as well. And I, I think that's sort of the spirit, like, do we want to try to do this or not? Like, because we can figure it out. It doesn't mean it's easy, but we can do it. And when I spoke to the coordinator at Leeds, it was clear like there was a question, right? Do we need a district wide core, like administrator? Do we need just site coordinators? I think I agree with member Agna that it's likely we need a district wide. And we need to fund that. And we're likely going to have to fund some positions if we decide to do this, starting in the late spring, mid to late spring. And you know, we'll have to figure out how to pay for those, whether, you know, we're going to get Bobby's financial report. We're going to see whether or not there's any elasticity to absorb those costs in our existing budget, or if we have to make other changes or make other requests. But I do want to emphasize like how short that money is. It's very small money relative to the budget and relative to the investment we get back in terms of ability to provide care to our students. So I would say it's like money well spent. I don't think we can just voice any of this on to the administration and say, figure it out like by yourselves with no support. It's just, that's not fair or realistic, right? So we will have some cost. The coordinator thought it would be about, in terms of materials, about $10,000 per site to get set up in terms of, like, that's what leads. If they're going to outfit leads today for the equipment that they use, they, she thought it would be about $10,000. And you know, there are ongoing sort of program costs, but those are covered by the, the tuition. And so yeah, I, I think all of these questions we have to, like, we're, well, if we vote for this and we said, let's do it. All of these questions come onto the table and we have to figure it out. The, the other thing I'd say is well, two things. One is like, it's not really a pilot if we rolled it out at one school with the Y there, right? Because it's not telling you what an actual school would look like because it's distorted by the nature of the experiment, right? Like, that's why Leeds is still a better model. It is true that our populations may look different and we don't know exactly how. Right? But it's also true that at the district level, like any insurance pool, right? That you get a net average that will look a certain way, right? Where things get blended. And that's also why I sort of mentioned earlier, the possibility of adjusting the pay scales depending on what the overall pool looks like. And it, it would still look, you know, instead of having a max rate of $7, if there's someone that could pay 10, do we ask them to pay 10? And if there's someone that can pay zero, do we ask them, you know, we don't ask them, you know, like, we, we can think about all those questions of equity. Right now, we just have like a, a three-tier model, reduced, free or the $7 rate, right? But we could make it look many different ways depending on how we figure out the blend that we would need in order to make it sustainable. But Leeds is, has produced about $100,000 surplus over a number of years, right? They have a large balance that they're carrying and has grown steadily over time. I think we have a lot of good data to say that we could figure out these things like Leeds figured out to make itself sustainable. And that was just the last thing, like I, I, I think this is hard. But I think it's worth trying to do. And if we voted to move forward with this, it's not precluding the Y from saying, hey, we're going to offer childcare. But they may decide that it's not viable for them, or they may decide we're going to change our program to look this way, right? Like, we don't have an agreement with them. There's no memorandum of understanding. There's no contract. We essentially have benefited from their willingness to provide childcare at these three sites in the manner they've been able to do so. Right? So if when we, if we were to go forward with this, we're essentially bringing ourselves into competition with them. And that changes their calculus, right? Like, I don't want to pretend it doesn't. The reason I'm arguing for this is because, you know, of everything I said before regarding the licensures and the economies of scale and everything else, we will just be able to deliver more flexible, more affordable, more equitable care. And we should do it and we should rise to the occasion to do it. And I hope you, you'll join me in taking the step. Thanks.
Before I go to you, Bobby, I just want to acknowledge that Julie Bianco from the Y is here. And you know, I, I agree with member Stein that we have greatly benefited from their willingness to, to provide this service to the district for years and years and years. So if, you know, she is here, if anyone, you know, wanted to recognize her or have had any questions for the Y. Bobby.
I just wanted to just point out that I was originally told that it would probably be around, around 10K for a startup for supplies. But in one of our last meetings that we had, the director of the Leeds program has said it's really more likely 20K just in supplies to start up for each site. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Okay. Cassie, can you reiterate the motion, please? Who's Cassie?
My apologies to move forward with a district wide lead style program for fall 2026.
Okay. And to clarify for me, that would not preclude the Y from also operating, or would it? Dr. Bonner, I don't know if you could answer that or?
The motion did not, it, it didn't speak to that. So, and I didn't make the motion. So I don't know. I, I would suspect that the Y program could still run in tandem with our, our startup programs.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to say my intent too on the motion is not to say whether or not the Y can operate. It's just that we would pursue a district wide version of the Leeds program.
Sorry, I heard something, but I don't know what it was. Roll call, please, Cassie.
Member Weizenfreund.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Hennessy Skong, sorry. Member Miller.
Yes, sorry.
Member LaBoutte.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
Member Gacy.
Yes.
Okay. Next is the business administrators' report and back to you, Bobby.
Okay, so I have everything in your packet for tonight. I will do a quarterly report in January with the new members, which is timely, so that is good. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, any questions for Bobby? Member Stein.
Hey Bobby, I was just wondering if you could, like, when I was looking at the year to date actuals that you provided, right? Some of the categories like, you know, in percentages lie, right? It could be that $500 was budgeted and 2,000 was spent. So it's like a huge percentage already over. But are there anything that you would want to bring attention to us? Where there are lines that are much further depleted or overspent that we kind of weren't anticipating or that we should be worried about as the year continues?
There are a few things, but basically it is because either our grant was not approved by D E S I yet. So for instance, out of district lines that really some of that, that will go over to the grant, but we couldn't have put it there yet. So we have all our encumbrances in place. But now that the grant has finally been completely approved and, and financially approved, we can move that. So there are lines like that. There are a few lines where we might have to make adjustments because the budget was either Was either put in the wrong place or we have to um. Move something that. Should, but nothing huge at this point. Um, we're about 33% of the way. On the budget, which is about right, because we are about a third of the way or. A third of the way through. The fiscal year, if you will. But other than that, I'm not seeing anything glaring right now.
Great, thanks so much.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Sorry, I thought I had more questions. Uh, my question actually uh, was for doctor, was supposed to be during Dr. Bonner's um. Uh, superintendent report. Um, it's not related to the after school programming though. My question was about the um. If we have an update about the. Uh, coming enrollment for the new affordable housing complex that's um, opening. Uh, on Bridge Road.
Doctor Bonner, are you looking for that or do you have?
N- no, I had not. I don't have an update. I would have to speak to um. Uh, the department head.
Yeah, I, I just know that the, that the um.
Ribbon cutting is Monday.
Yeah, so there are going to be people there soon. And uh, yeah, just wanting us to make sure to keep. A close eye on that. So do you think, uh, do you think we'll be able to have, I mean. I, I don't know, uh, is there a possibility that, that will? That people will be moving in before the end of the year?
So I, I don't know. The last date that was given to me, I was, it was, it was towards um, January or February or so. So I would have to check with the department um, just to find out what, what the updates are and that I will fill you all in once I get that information when I'm back in district. Okay?
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, so if nothing else for Bobby, then. Um, rules and policy subcommittee report, member Gacy.
Oh, thank you. Um, at our last meeting, we had Kate Zach. Give us a, a slideshow on AI at NPS. There's a link in the minutes of the 10, of the 10, 15. Rules and procedure to that slideshow, which was very informative. Um, she talked about. Uh, generative. AI versus predictive AI and tools. Within. AI for student use and tools to support AI and administration. Talked about AI bias, you know, they're not neutral. Um, and talked about policy guidelines. And uh. Impact on classroom expectations. They have examples in them of setting AI expectations and acceptable use. She recommends that we update current policies and documents, including the acceptable use policy. The technology agreement form and the code of conduct. Um, it's difficult to have. A standalone policy on AI to keep, that you can keep current because. It's changing and growing so quickly. Desi has uh, issued some guidance. Policies would differ, but you know. Implementation of AI is going to differ classroom to classroom. And assignment to assignment. So it's, it's a tricky thing. But we do have work to do on academic integrity and legal implications. Then uh, we turned the rest of our time to the bathroom signage issue. Um, how to. Label multi um stalled bathroom access. Across district. Then we got guidance from attorney Taylor there. Uh, who said you have to not only, you have to consider state law, federal law. And uh. Plumbing regulations. With regard to the federal law, Trump has threatened to pull funding in Colorado and Virginia. For noncompliance with um. Uh, their interpretation of uh. I can't even read the writing. It's gotten so late. Hold on, let me get some more light on this issue. For noncompliance in their interpretations. Cause the USDOA now says that all gender. Multi-stall bathrooms are a civil rights issue for cisgendered girls. State law, however, says we can't discriminate against. Who uses the bathroom. The plumbing code permits. Changes in multi-stall bathrooms. Um, but. You have to, if you go to all gender, you have to put in floor to ceiling partitions. And locks. Um, I guess. If you don't have floor to ceiling, you can put in the locks. And then as things get updated, so you can grandfather in, I believe, the um. How tall the. The partitions are, but any update you have to fix it. And the plumbing code says, as long as you have. One single use, all gender bathroom. On the same floor and within 300 feet of a multi. Uh, all gender bathroom, then you can do it. Attorney Taylor warned us that, or advised us that we have to consider both. Gender bullying that goes along with. You know, um. Sort of uh, bathrooms the way we have it. Versus religious accommodations and cultural objections. So it's. You know. We had that presentation. Now we have, now we're figuring out where to go. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, member sign is that, is this a question?
Um, sort of. I just wanted to echo member Gacy's uh, report from uh, Keats Act that we had on AI and it was um. It was really fantastic. And if you're interested in what the district's doing. And the professional development opportunities that have been put together so far. Uh, highly recommend you watch the recording because it was. I learned a lot about what we're doing and I was really impressed. So, thanks.
Okay. Um, okay, next up, budget and property report, member Stein.
Okay, um, we met actually on Monday, so it's fresh in my memory. And we discussed what we all just talked about again, our recommendation from the previous uh, meeting. To move to um. Uh, lead style program. At all elementary schools and um, talked to the superintendent about her recommendation for the partial rollout. We uh, we also talked about sort of our desire to get a meeting scheduled um, with the mayor to talk about. How we're going to meet IEPs. Within our existing budget for this year. So we had a conversation about, about that, sort of reiterating what we talked about in October, our desire to, to begin to have the conversation about. What it would look like. How can we, how can we figure out how to do this? We also talked about what our, our sort of our priorities are. And the priorities of the committee right now are, oh, and I should say, we talked about the FY27 budget. What we would like to see. How the process went last year and largely sort of the guidance we gave to the superintendent was that we, we liked the, the three different budgets that were presented. And we appreciated the way those were mapped onto our ability to meet. Or not meet uh, district improvement goals. And that we thought that was an effective um. In a, an effective way to convey a couple of different versions of what the budget might look like. We also liked seeing sort of the, the detail of the other funds for the other $5 million that's part of our operating budget. Which we saw in even more clarity last budget cycle, so we want to do that again. Um, and just sort of excited about. How we're going to work through that process. It was also reiterated that it was beneficial when uh. Councilor Maori joined us, you know, she was the only member from. City council finance that took us up on the invitation, but that was a really good conversation and we're hoping that there'll be. Collaboration with uh, the finance committee this cycle. Um, and the other sort of priorities that we talked about. Were uh, sort of property. This was also something that came up in the agenda tonight, right? The solo, the geotherm with the roof, but sort of the, the subcommittee's responsibility to know more about. The district's property. And um, the other thing that we're really working on that got bumped from this month to next month is a sort of a transportation cost analysis. This is something we've been working on for a while. To see what kind of savings we might be able to recognize. By bringing some of our transportation in-house. Uh, and Bobby and the transportation director have been working on this and they're going to be joining us at our December meeting. Um, to talk about what they've. What they've sort of figured out so far. So that's sort of a high level from us and I appreciate everyone who's tuned in or watched the recordings and I, I hope it continues to be helpful for you all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we are curriculum subcommittee, member Agna.
And I'd like to also uh, echo that we. Hope that people can watch the recordings of our meetings. I think that again, it's. Something that um, I think is respectful for those who come to these subcommittees. And spend time preparing a presentation. Um, and I think that that way we can. Honor their time that they've done that. And also be informed and so that um. The subcommittee chairs don't have to do a complete revisit of the whole meeting. So I hope that people can watch the curriculum subcommittee. It was very helpful, very impressive. Um, Pres- Principal Tagliari did his um, competency determination policy. Report and we've already talked about that today, so I'm going to skip that. Um, Dr. Bonner spoke about the middle school exploratory pathway and implementation of MYCAP. Which also is a very exciting prospect that she's working on with. Principal Lowry, the counselor there, Janice Susi and um, associate principals Napoli and Susi. And it's really to start to prepare the middle schoolers for. Their upcoming choice that they will have around vocational versus academic um. High school secondary. It did come up in our conversation that we. We're, want to make sure that middle schoolers aren't placed in any um. Awkward position of trying to decide what their careers are earlier than even that they have to. But the reality is that if they want to explore a vocational, it does happen at the end of middle school. So that's really an interesting project that's happening at the middle school. And we also had a really great presentation from the reading coach. Rachel Nicholas, along with Kate Messmer, the director of curriculum and instruction. They gave us a good update on what's happening. Um, district wide as far as reading and the science of learning. She has offered. Rachel Nicholas has offered professional development in the area of science of learning. Of learning, reading, and she's done that for all the middle school and high school teachers. It was well received. It's very exciting to think about. That that is moving forward in the plan for also. Helping to prepare. The teachers at the middle and high school for. What is going to always be the case, maybe not as much as it is right now, but it'll always be the case that there will be students who will need to have some support in learning to read. Um, I know that as a principal, we often had students move in. Who had been in schools where maybe the practice hadn't been as, as good. So I think that again, I think this, this movement toward. Building capacity for middle and high school teachers around. The science of reading and um. At a developmentally appropriate level, which they've also looked into. Uh, programs that do target uh, older learners of reading so that they aren't seen as something that's too. Simple or basic for them. I think it's really important to mention. That Ms. Nicholas, um, she's very stretched. She's stretched very thin. She has been working. Solidly with all levels of our school district now. And she is one person. And I am concerned as a former educator and also for our district. I think that we need to identify areas that of high need right now in terms of our ability to. Meet the goals that we have. I know that it's been mentioned about. Looking at what is needed at the, for students on IEPs, but I also think the interventionists. Need to be really probably um, enhanced. Their, their ability to do this. Is compromised by the lack of numbers of them. And not, we didn't go into math. But we did talk about literacy and um, again, Rachel Nicholas was very honest about that and her ability to. Do what she's been tasked to do. So I don't. I, you know, next is my last meeting and I don't know what the process would be, but. I'm just wondering if at some point there is a discussion about a mid-year appropriation. To add at least another literacy interventionist or literacy coach. Um, in whatever ways I, I'm not the one to, which it should be, but I am the one, I think. Who is really recommending that we think about that because. We have the skills, I think, in our faculty and we also have the skills in our coach and in our literacy. Um, our uh, curriculum coordinator. I don't know that we have the capacity. By people and um, I would. If it's a recommendation I can make, or if it's just to put it, I think that Dr. Bonner has thought about this as well. Um, so it's not on the agenda, but I would love to put that in maybe perhaps the next agenda. That we think about um, adding at least one literacy interventionist or, or a coach to work with Rachel Nicholas. That's it. Thank you.
Um, uh, member sign, do you have a? Question or comment on that?
Yeah, I have a question uh, from member Agna. Um, I haven't been able to watch the recording yet, so if it's there. Just tell me and I'll go watch it. Um, but um. I'm struck by your, your comment and agree. And you know, I was really concerned last year when we talked specifically about that entering ninth grade cohort. And the expectation on that intervention is the amount of training she was supposed to do. For all of these teachers that were then somehow supposed to deliver. Intervention services in the classroom. It was just, it felt unworkable. And I similarly was worried then. I'm more worried now hearing you say about this strain. Um, I, it, yeah, and so it's that, like, I, I hope we can do something like you suggest. And I also hope we can talk about what sort of screeners we're doing for those students now that they're in ninth grade. Um, we had identified, I think about 25, even after the DIBL screening that needed. They had some more significant deficits and there was no commitment to sort of. Disclose that to caregivers or move forward on it anyway. And I worry about losing them because they're not being. Screened now. So I want to hold both of those things. That are related together and I, it's a real need and I hope we can. We can do something and I wouldn't want to lose. A talented interventionist because we're being unreasonable either. Thanks.
I would just add that the, the video has been posted, right? Uh, Cassie, I, I recall that you put it up or no?
I routinely distribute the recordings after each subcommittee meeting.
Thank you. And I also don't want to conflate interventionists with coaches. I know they're both. They have very different roles. Rachel Nicholas spoke as the coach and she is in charge of professional development for this, the district around that as, as Kate Messmer is. And that is something that I would trust that the superintendent with. Director Messmer and the coach Nicholas could figure out where, what kind of need there is at this point. Thank you.
Member Miller.
I just wanted to add to what member Agnes said that. Um, Rachel Nicholas also did all the evaluation for all the eighth graders. Not just the one, I mean, all the eighth grader. Not just the one, I mean, all the eighth graders. So. She's exhausted and we need to supplement for sure. And I think that she's continuing now with the ninth graders to not just, no one's excluded. It's more that she's identifying every single kid that has trouble and she's now training teachers. So. There's only so much one person can do. That's all.
Okay, we are up to ad hoc cellphone policy committee report. Member Gazy, back to you.
So um, we've had three meetings. There are on the ad hoc committee, there are. Two students, two parents, three admin um from. The high school JFK and Ryan Road, uh, two teachers, two school committee members. There were a few more. Who initially said they were going to come, but their schedules and our schedules never worked out. Um. The first meeting, we explored the different options, bell to bell, off and away, limited use. The second meeting, we figured we had to sort of. Figure out a direction to focus in. We took a straw poll and um. All except for the students voted for the bell to bell, mostly because our um. Uh, a big factor being the way that the state legislature is heading into. Wanting a statewide bell to bell. Uh, the third meeting, we gathered information. From local districts and made spreadsheets. Uh, we looked at Pioneer Valley Regional School, Hampshire Regional. Chickopee High School and Brockton. Uh, Brockton is over on the other side of the state, but they're pretty big. Uh, we looked at things like the practicalities and the staff needed for entrance and exit, how that looked like. Um, we looked at exemptions like five oh fours, for instance, for kids who have diabetes. Um. You, which if you're using pouches, you could give them a Velcro one that they could open rather than one that locked. Um. We talked about um, the students very much wanted and um, many people agreed. The question is whether teachers and staff uh also. Are they off and away or do they have a pouch? Is the pouch Velcroed, whatever? Uh, we have not talked with NACE yet about that. Um. We've looked at um. Uh, public education and student impact on the issue. Um, you know, thinking about. Presentations to each PTO and other things that would be needed. Uh, before a pilot could go. And then we looked at different enforcements. Uh, the state has come out, they do not recommend uh using suspension as your. Um. As violations grow up. Some schools have done that, but it really does, is not in line. With our restorative emphasis. Um, now we're uh drafting a policy. That sort of reflects the realities of our system or a draft pilot that would reflect the realities of. Um. How it's gone for other schools and um. What um, what's best practice? Uh. I remind you again that this is a pilot. One of the things that has been extremely helpful is Member Hennessy, who works at. Chickopee High School, which is now in their, I think, second year. Um. It was able to give us a lot of nuts and bolts, like it takes. Ten people. They have a, they have about nine hundred in their high school, which is similar to ours in size. So to check in, I mean, you've got lines for people that will put their. Cell phones in a pouch. You've got lines for people who either forgot or don't or lost their pouches or whatever. Uh, you have lines for one thing that you do is you write. Um. If a child is not bringing their cellphone to school, then the parent writes a letter about that. Um. So. We're in the midst of doing all that. And that's where we are.
Thank you. It's a lot of work. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Um, then, um, moving on to the uh ad hoc superintendent search committee report.
That's also me.
Also, uh, Member Gazy.
Yeah. Um, so we've had three meetings. Of course, all of the people on this. Particular ad hoc committee are going to be gone in uh. At the end of December. Um, so it was hard for us to recommend. A particular agency. We figured that is something that the new school committee, but. Um. Remember Agna had a conversation with uh Glenn Kuchar of MASC. Who said that there's many super and superintendent searches underway right now. And he's advising districts to delay large-scale searches. And instead post for internal vacancies because. You know, internal candidates understand the operating environment and there are individuals with superintendent licensure. In the district and it's considerable financial savings. Um, what we did was. Instead of um. Our last search was in twenty twenty-three and we paid for a brochure to be. Uh, put up and updated. I think that um. Uh, we made an error in putting, sending to your pocket, to your packet, including in your packet. The brochure and uh what we had been working on. There are more updated versions. That we emailed you and shared with you tonight. Um, so what we did was if you. If I can share my screen, hold on. Um. We had. That's not it. Which one is it? Uh, Christmas. No. That's okay. So now let me just figure out how to do this. Eh 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 eh, share. And it is this one. So. This was our twenty twenty-three one. Um. I don't know if I can make this a little bit easier to see. Oops, too big, too big. Is that okay? Um. That we did. It included some district information along the left-handed side where I'm focusing. You know, all our administration and staff and um. Then. It included our vision. Um. To. Qualifications, had a lot of nice pictures, selection criteria and key responsibilities. The application process and um. A timeline and a community profile. So we took that template. And then. Is it this one? No. Sorry. Good. Uh, Member Agna, if you can get the other one up while I'm futzing with this, the the updated one that we made all the changes with.
You have it up, Holly.
You have it up. Well, I'll stop screen sharing if I can figure out how.
Well, you have it, you have the.
No, that's what we can see right now, Holly.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, but I, oh, there it is.
Yes.
So we have to. Change, things in yellow are things that um. We need to update, but we just. And we were thinking about putting in under school buildings, just the number of kids in each building. Uh, looking at, you know, like the associate, I think there's only one director of student services. Uh, making sure we had all the names correct. Um. And. In our vision. We, this strikeout of, but in the anti-bias and we um, we put in our new. Thing that's down here uh in yellow, the statement that it does not and shall not discriminate. That's from our new. Place. We also. Uh, let's see, anything else there qualifications? Then we took the timeline that MASK gave us, which, you know, starting in January is sort of the same thing and we just. Updated. We didn't need the brochure and timeline approval. Uh, the search committee. Uh, selected. I know that um. The mayor had a um, search committee last time and maybe you still have a questionnaire. Or some kind of invitation that we could work off to replicate that. Um. Our thought was here on the application process. That. It gets submitted to HR or School Spring and they might do an initial uh. Screening. Um, just of people who. Have our qualifications and people who don't. Um. We sort of took out that. Uh, DEIB statement. Uh, we changed it a little bit because of the current political. Uh, payback uh. Stuff that's going on if you go against, if you mention DEI. Um. And then we took out this part with Liz Fond. That's our thing. And in our community profile. We added Smith College to our community partners. Um. So that was a. That was. One thing that we did. The last piece is, is it here? No. This one. No, oops, sorry. I keep getting all these. Notices. It's hard for me to see where I am because the. Christmas. Is it the brochure? No, NPS. Yeah. This is it, the timeline for the superintendent's search. Which was based on the same timeline before. So. That was the work we did. And if you still want to go with a full committee, uh, I mean, a full. Um. Search firm. We felt that that was the decision of the new school committee, but we tried to do all this work to. If you were ready to launch, that we could. Provide this. Uh, and Member Agna said she'd step in if I forgot parts, so maybe you could recognize her.
Okay, Member Agna, and then we've got some questions. I have some questions, but Member Agna, yes, you, Member Miller, uh, let Member Agna uh finish up this presentation and we'll go there.
Yeah, it's a couple of things. One is that. When we thought about the posting and not doing an agency, we, it's not. Just an internal posting. It would be a posting, the way you post for teachers and staff. So that School Spring is nationwide, international, whatever. So by posting it on School Spring, it still would. Go out to a wider group of people. And the other thing is there is a questionnaire from last time. For um, people who are interested in being on the Superintendent Search Committee, we have that questionnaire. If that's something that you would like to have as a, at least as a template for developing your own. That's it.
Okay. Um, okay, I'm going to go to Member Wiesenfreud and then Member Miller. I know she raised her hand first. I'm sorry, Member Miller. I promise you're next.
All right, thank you. Um, so thank you so much for all the work you've done on this and um. Uh, you know, I will say that, you know, I I I will be interested in being on the search committee moving forward when when that time comes. Um. I do agree with starting by posting internally. I think also posting on School Spring is great. Um, in terms of the selection criteria and key responsibilities, I think it would be really important to put in a couple of bullets. One of them being a demonstrated ability to develop and oversee highly effective and compliant special education programs. We do mention special education, just knowledge of, but I think to be very direct with that. Um, and the other.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry. Demonstrative.
Demonstrated, demonstrated ability to develop and oversee highly effective and compliant special education programs. I can put it in the chat too.
Okay.
And then the second one is to um demonstrated ability to implement intentional family engagement practices. I think that would also be important. Um, in addition to the community profile, I think it would be great to add a school profile to really talk a little bit about. You know, it's like, yes, they can go to the DESI website and so forth, but I think. It's important to talk a little bit about our s- our specific strengths and challenges. Thank you.
I just remembered one thing. Is we did want to put in a link to our long-term. Plan.
Strategic.
Our five-year plan.
Strategic plan, yeah.
Your strategic plan.
Okay, Member Miller.
I just wanted to say that since I was on the last two committees, um, I. The first step that we, there were three of us that none of you were on, that we selected a search company. And I have to say, after doing extensive research, we ended up using MASK. And they did an excellent job for us and a lot of our, the legwork that you're doing. They take over and do a lot for you. And um, it was a very extensive process. And this part, Member Agna knows, we were on then a large group. That was very representative and extensive and that was the group that then ended up. In selecting the different care uh. The different applicants and it's a very long process, but I, being on it from the very beginning. It's um, I know you're right that the next school committee will have to do that part, but I strongly encourage hiring one of those companies. And I thought MASK did a great job. I don't know what you you thought, Member Agna, but.
Okay, um, Member Agna and Member Gazy, do you want to respond? And then I've got some questions.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um. I I'm not sure we were clear in that we went to MASK and asked for advice. And we got an answer from the Director of MASK that they don't use us, basically. Don't, don't do an organization. The, in the first round. And they're advising everybody in Massachusetts because there are so many. Openings that we should actually think about posting it. And um, see. openings that we should actually think about posting it and um, see what happens. Um, so it is, you know, they're, they're not trying to uh, lead us the wrong way and they were also not trying to get our business again. They were very clear, Glenn Kuchar, the director, saying that's how they advise all districts in Massachusetts right now.
Uh, member Gazy.
I also was on that search, initial search one with Margaret where we investigated the different firms. And I remember being less than impressed by some of these firms that were doing huge amounts. And frankly, having a search so near, so, so quickly after the last one. I mean, a lot of it was the brochure work, which is very updatable and thank you uh, Anat for those uh, suggestions. I think they're very good, although I was wondering whether you wanted uh, each school profile of each school or the high school, just the district? A district profile. Uh, I sort of thought it was on there, but, so that's what I wanted to say. So go ahead, fire away, mayor.
Okay, um, yeah, I thought there, this, there was a district profile. I was gonna ask if maybe we wanted to just drop in the links to the videos that each, each school made.
Ooh. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Digital, you know, document, right? Um, that kind of give an applicant sort of a flavor for each of the schools. Um, could, when you get a sec, could you put that timeline back up?
Mm-hmm. Share. Oh, wrong screen. There.
Okay, so, so, when would, first of all, there's an application closing date, but there's an app, not an application posting date. So when?
Well, that's, that's when we, we also would take over the brochure and timeline approval and the search committee, the, that is to be determined, whenever you guys want to go ahead with it.
Okay, but meet the deadlines, you feel like it needs, the applications need to close by mid-February, it looks like.
Mid-February, because then, I mean, these were just, what we did is we looked at the calendar and we looked at our calendar and you know, we just had to adjust a day or two each way, for two days each way, to make it work again.
So when would we um, ask people to submit applications to be on the search committee?
I would assume pretty soon.
Okay, and so, and you.
Rather than later, because you want to have it by January, early January.
Right. Um, and you said you have what we did last time, we, you have the application or the questionnaire or whatever we put out last time.
Yes, do you have that, Gwen, that you can share?
Okay, will you share that with me?
I'll share it with you, yeah.
Okay, um, because obviously this is gonna be, if, are, are you suggesting that the brochure and timeline should be approved by the next school committee?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay.
No, that was just then, um. I don't think so. I mean, you have time to do it, really, because it's right around the first week of January, correct, that you have your first meeting?
Um, yes, the, so the, the swearing in would be on the fifth, so then the eighth would be actually the first meeting.
Right.
Um, just a lot to throw at a first meeting.
Well, I don't have any uh, problems with uh, approving the brochure and timeline. Maybe give members, do it in the December meeting?
Um, yeah, and I guess that goes to my next question, which is, so are, is the subcommittee making sort of, making a formal recommendation that we post internally and on School Spring and not go with a firm, is that?
Yes.
And you're making it at this meeting? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so then, at our, at our December meeting, were, were you envisioning that we would, so we would sort of take in this information now and then at our December meeting, we would vote on how we move forward or were you thinking?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Because I wouldn't want to vote on it tonight, because, you know, we've still got, you know, we can clean up the brochure, put in those suggestions, put in the links and then have people look at it and see if they feel like that is measurable. Uh, and then, that's why I think.
Okay.
Um, maybe, maybe the rest of the school committee would like to weigh in on that right now.
So maybe we would do the brochure and timeline approval at the December meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, member LaBounty.
Yeah, I think, uh, yes, we thought that that would, that that timing would work, but also the idea of putting out um, uh, for a search committee doesn't need to wait for, I mean, that can start at any point. Um, so, um, because regardless of which way you go, you're going to have people on the committee. So, that could, that felt like that could go ahead and get started. Um, so it was just more like, did, did, did we want to do the um, brochure in the December meeting, but we thought that made sense?
Okay, thank you. Member Miller.
I think that makes sense, first of all. And secondly, I was just wondering, when you look for a larger search committee, um, you'll, who, you'll be sending it out to students, caretakers, a wide group of people, right?
Yes, I, I mean, I think we identified a bunch of stakeholders last time. We'll review that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think December's make sense.
Okay.
Also, um, I know you were gonna call on me next, so I just blabbed out. Um, the search committee selected, they're not really going to have a lot of work to do, well, they will in sort of getting their heads straight, but the application closing deadline is going to be uh, February thirteenth. And the orientation for the search committee was February second. And I believe the orientation for the search committee uh, was a presentation by um, uh, what's her name, Dina, right?
Well, it was Liz LaFond, she does the orientations.
Oh, she does the orientations? Well, I also thought we had a presentation by Dina on.
Dina did do a presentation.
Mm-hmm.
On interviewing stuff, yeah. Um, uh, member Agna?
That reminds me that it did come up about who would do this if we didn't have an agency to do it. And um, I know that member Gazy mentioned that we would hope that HR, in the same way that HR takes applications for staff and reviews them to make sure there's licensing there, and whether, then they would pass it along to the uh, committee. But we know that there will be some other things that have to happen. And again, thinking about the capacity in our district for that to occur, I don't think we could add it to anybody's job. And so we don't know how, if there's any thought about how that could work, or whether we would ask um, HR to set up the interviews and things. It's really, that is the piece that we have a question about.
That, if, what I remember is that's a huge piece. So, I mean, sure, HR could check for sort of competency, but that was, you know, there was tours here and then tours in other districts, um, that's a whole, that, that's a huge thing.
Yeah, I don't remember having HR because there were so many candidates that were from far away. And I just, I don't remember them having that added to their work.
No, that's what MAS D did.
No, MAS D did that.
That's what, that's the advantage of having, hiring someone is that they set up all of that.
Exactly.
So, that would be a, a huge undertaking.
Also, the focus.
I'm not sure that HR would be able to take on that part of it.
I mean, when I talked to Glenn Kuchar about this, he said that he and other of the field workers would be willing to speak to our committee about this recommendation that he has, that we do it without an agency or an organization. So I don't know if we want to ask him for that. Um, we could ask him, I mean, we could ask him tomorrow, because we can see him at this meeting to see if he would be willing to even zoom in at some point to address these questions that we have.
That would be great. Okay. Um, any other discussion on this?
Not me, I just can't find my hands-down thing.
Okay, no worries, I can put it down for you.
Oh, good.
First time.
Um, yeah, just briefly, I, I do have the same practical worry, if we don't go with the firm, how do we actually operate the search? Because we'd be asking a lot of Cassie or us to volunteer, like, it's a real practical sort of question, right? Um, so, I share that same concern. Um, maybe in December, we can talk a little bit more about how we think we can manage the internal first, or rather, the, without a firm first and then, like, what, what that would actually look like. Um, so we can set up the next committee with some recommendations and some expectations um, as well, but food for that.
Okay. Yeah, that's a big part to figure out. Um, okay, anything else on this? Okay, you can stop screen sharing. Thank you, member Gazy.
Easier said than done.
Okay, I can put the hand down for you, I'm not sure I can stop you screen sharing. Oh, actually, I can. There you go.
So, if I may, also say something about the cost. You know, if, if we don't go with a firm or an agency or whatever, um, that saves us a significant amount of money that possibly could be a stipend for somebody who is currently employed, who would possibly like to have a little additional money. And again, I don't want to ask for any extra money out of our budget, but we know that if we were to do this with a firm, it would, it's now about twenty thousand or thirty to forty that we've seen across, um, twenty thousand, I think it's MASK, they're the cheapest.
Yeah, and fifty to sixty.
Yeah, fifty or sixty, yeah.
Um, well, we already passed an order for, I think, up to twenty, I'd have to go back and look what it was.
Okay, well, I don't know. Again, that might be something we consider next, at our next meeting, whether we even suggest that that be offered to somebody and then decide from there.
Okay. Um, all right, thank you, um, all of you for working on that. Uh, future topics. Member Stein?
Um, it could be a future topic, or maybe we could just do it. Um, I know we get the um, recording link sent out for the subcommittee meetings. And I'm wondering if we could create some sort of a page on the district website where folks can find those to access them? Um, because right now, I don't know how anyone finds those, since they're not recorded by NOM. I don't know if NOM is posting those Zoom.
They do post them. They're not as timely as the ones that they um, record themselves, but those, those recordings do get sent to them and they do post them.
Got it. Uh, yes, I don't know, if there's any way we could like, post the links ourselves somewhere, so people can get them who are looking for them in a more timely manner, that would be awesome. Um, I don't want it to be a huge project though, so if there's an easy way to do it, that would be great. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. Let me write that down. Um, member Gazy.
Um, given the fact that most of the school committee is turning over, um, I think we need to think about the transfer of power. Uh, for ins- um, for instance, just the, especially with subcommittees. And how, whether we want to offer, you know, I would be happy to meet with whoever is in rules and policy. Uh, we do have a spreadsheet that I'll be updating as to which policies we've, we are working on, where they are in the process of development. Um, but, you know, it's just, how are we going to do that so that the school committee continues to function? So maybe each, in this next month, each of the subcommittees could discuss what they think would be helpful if you had a whole new, brand-new group, including, you know, you're gonna have subcommittees with chairs that never were on a subcommittee before, much less chair it. Um, you know, I was in, so, just a suggestion about thinking about how we mentor our successors or offer mentorship if they would like it.
It's a really nice idea, thank you, member Gazy. Uh, member LaBounty.
Um, it's after eleven, so I think we need to, we need to go to eleven fifteen or something or, um, and I'm seconding what Holly said about uh, the next committees.
Um, does someone want to make a motion to extend by five minutes?
I'm making a motion to extend by five minutes.
I'll second it.
Second.
Okay, which is maybe a member Agna, seconded by member LaBounty, roll call please.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting this. Um, hold on one second, sorry. Mayor Shara.
Yes.
Holly Gazy.
Yes.
Member Visenfreud.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I just pressed the wrong button, uh, yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member LaBounty?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Okay, so, eleven-ten. Um, okay, member Visenfreud.
Yeah, so um, I did see uh, Dr. Bonner's uh, comments on the high school bathrooms in, in her October thirty-first uh, report, but I would like to have that uh, put back on the agenda to discuss uh, what we're actually gonna do to make this more tolerable for students at the high school.
Okay. Uh, member uh, Seraphie Cox.
Yeah, um, I just uh, was gonna second um, member Gazy's uh, request for the um, succession plan, as it were. Uh, and one thing I think to think about with that is also timing, because um, mayor, um, do you, have you already um, set a date for when you would be announcing or expect to announce um, committee membership? And my assumption is that it is after our next meeting.
Oh, it would be at the first meeting of the new s- committee?
Okay, so, so committee members wouldn't know until the first meeting of the committee, which subcommittee is there on?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, maybe earlier that week, I would, could send it out, but I, I've gotta look at what the rules say, but it's right around that first meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I will put out um, the memo, you know, in the next couple of weeks.
Mm-hmm.
And then set a deadline for um, you know, sometime in late December or something. For them, for uh, people to give me their requests and then I would work on that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, Bobby?
Yeah, just, um, one important thing is to, um, make sure we get a member to be the single signer on the warrant process, so we don't have a stop in business.
Yes, so you would need that for the eighth or?
Um, well, so the new members don't start until January.
Right, there's one in on the fifth. The first school committee meeting is the eighth.
Yeah, so definitely by the eighth.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, okay, any other topics? So, uh, Cassie? I don't see the future business meetings on the agenda. Am I missing them? Why not?
Um, I, I attribute that to a transition and doing the agenda the old way. I apologize.
That's, um, that's okay. Does any, uh?
I could tell you.
That would be great. Could you list them, since I don't have them?
Do you want me to read them or just send them out?
If you could read them uh, quickly, that would be great.
Rules and policy.
Two minutes.
Rules and policy, November nineteenth. No curriculum. Cell phone, Thursday, December four. Budget and property, Monday, December eighth. School committee, December eleventh. That's it.
Well done, thank you. Um, okay, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Motion's made by member Gazy, seconded by member LaBounty. Roll call, please.
Holly Gazy.
Yes.
Member Weizenfreud.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member LaBounty.
Yes.
Member Agnes.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
At eleven-twelve.
All right, excellent. Thank you, everyone. Good night. I have eleven-oh-nine, by the way.
Well, we, we have different time in East Hampton. Okay, eleven-oh-nine. Okay.
Bye.
Bye.